Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. My name is Carrie Martinek, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I'm going to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two and Act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law in July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northboard Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To confirm that board members and persons that just been on the agenda are remotely present can be heard. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Preski?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laurie Connors?
Here.
Robert Federico?
Here.
Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Great. Ground rules for the meeting. For presenters and applicants on the agenda, the Chair will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floors yield to them by the Chair. Speakers are asked to respond to the comments of others. Do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For our public comments, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand, a way to be recognized by the Chair. Please note, part of your phone number will be visible to those of you in the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen, a way to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Okay, that concludes the announcements for this evening. So on our agenda, we do have a board member that has a hard stop tonight, so I'm going to actually start with the public hearing for zero. This is not, hold on one second. Oh, I'm sorry. So start the hearing for zero through on Bartlett Street, just to make sure that that board member can be present this evening. And then we'll move on to the bylaws. So we'll start with Bartlett Street. So with that, why don't we bring in our guests? Let's see. Let's see, Dave Robinson, see Mark Donahue, and I think that's it. Now, Dave or Attorney Donahue, is there anyone else on your team tonight to bring over?
Israel Lopez will be joining if he is not already.
Okay, I don't see him this time. He's not here yet. Do you want to, did I catch you off guard by putting you first? Do you need a minute or?
Do you need him for this part? Do you want to? Mark.
Oops, are you, might be there. There you go.
My apologies. I'm texting him now, but I think we can start.
Okay, great. All right, Dave, I think you sent over some revised plans. Is there anything you wanted to point out or go over in any of the revisions that you shared?
Um, Mark, did you want to start? Sure, particularly in the interest of time since a board member has constraints. The plan set as submitted attempted to reply to the planner's comments originally of February seventh. To the extent applicable, comments received from Stan Tech as peer reviewers and a couple of things raised during the course of the public hearing. I know Ms. Connors has gone through her memorandum to indicate what changes were indicated there. We can certainly do a high level review if the Board so desires, but I think we've been responsive to the comments that have been received to date with regard to plan changes. The O and M plan was also revised and further submitted, so.
Great, and Israel looks like he's on now, so I brought him over. So he's here as well. If you wouldn't mind just any quick highlights, you don't have to do a deep dive, but it would just be helpful if you just want to point out any quick highlights.
David, you want to call, do you have available that plan that we showed, particularly with the new trees we've shown?
Oh, the landscaping plan?
If you have that, the might be the best thing to show as opposed to trying to walk through it descriptively.
One second. We sort of revised the parking area per one of her comments to incorporate more interior landscaping and then landscape these three islands. We kind of revised some of these islands to be a little bit bigger. We added some new plantings along this slope. We added a few more trees in this area to sort of screen the building from Bartlett. We added two new trees in the access drive to better screen it from Bartlett. And some minor parking changes to the curbing, the islands still at a hundred and fifty stall. We added a bike rack. It's difficult to see, but there's a bike rack here now for ten new bikes, which is one of the requirements that we're looking for. I think that's a lot of the high level changes that we made, mostly just moving around landscape islands, adding more trees and landscaping to the plan. Bike rack. We incorporated basically all of the comments from the Planning Department as well as the Stan Tech comment. There was a comment on the shut off valves for the drainage. So all of that's reflected in the current site plan that we submitted, resubmitted.
Okay, and I know a couple of board members, who on the board went on a site walk? And I know Laurie, I think you were there too. Millie, you went. Amy went. Bill, you didn't make it. Anthony, you went. Okay, so based on your site walk, or maybe you didn't even, even not based on the site walk, whatever the case, but anything that you have questions or comments about this?
I have a question. Is it okay if I go in first? Um, when we did this site walk, Dave, we had talked about that row of pine trees that are right off the aqueduct. And when we talked, you said, oh, the parking lot will be forty-five feet back. But if you look, the riprap is like right on the aqueduct, so I don't see how the trees would be saved.
So those trees are pretty much located right in here at the top of the berm. They're actually kind of grown into the side of the berm right in this area. So you know, it's a decent distance from the property line.
Yeah. I, if I might, Matt, Chair, Laurie shared Ms. Preski's comment with us, I think, on Friday. And we did take a quick look at it today. We do think that area might be able to be applied slightly, whether that's shrinking those compact spaces or retaining walls of the like. And so what we can certainly do is draft a proposed condition of approval that will review that and see what changes we can make and submit for approval to the Town Engineer.
Because if you can see while it's up, where the, right above the nine compact, that wording, there's a two dash line that goes across it. And that double dash line is where the walking path was. So for people who did the site walk, there's an unofficial walking path that the people who walk the aqueduct walk now, and I understand it will definitely go away because it's on private property. But when we took the site walk, we, we were told that the parking lot would start behind that path, so it'd be like forty feet back. So that's where, you know, when I see the path on the drawing, the parking is definitely within the path area. So that's how I could tell that it's not as far back as we thought when we did the walk.
Yeah, I think I, what I, maybe this was misconstrued, but what I, the forty foot was from the bait, like this berm is forty feet. So from the toe here to the high point here to the bottom here is about forty feet. We know that this path is going to be wiped out. And those trees that we were discussing are at the top of the slope right here. You can see where the slope breaks. They're kind of grown into the slope. So I figured that this area could be saved, but as Mark mentioned, you know, we're certainly open to a condition to describe that.
And yeah, maybe, yeah, definitely, because that was a major buffer and those were the only big trees out front there. So it'd be a shame if they came down.
Yeah, we think we can look at that and make it better. We'll do so as a condition of approval.
Other questions or comments?
I had a couple on the pathway being basically redirected, and I believe the chief liver might have also sent something about that so that the pedestrians aren't going up the berm over the accessway and then back down. I think, Dave, we talked about that or just asked about that. Is that something that could be considered that you looked into, or were you able to get any more options on that?
I'm sorry, if I may, this is Israel Lopez. Can I respond to that comment?
Yeah.
I think we need to understand what the status is of the, that walking trail. Does the town have an easement to use that, the MWRA for a walking path?
They do. Not paved, but they have, and they can walk on the aqueduct and mountain bike too. It's, it's an open biking and walking path.
Okay. Yeah, if maybe someone can provide or point us to where that document is, I think it'd be helpful for us to understand how that path is currently used. We certainly, you know, understand the desire to make sure that that crossing is a safe crossing, and I think what we've tried to do is accommodate, you know, that crossing. We understood it to be an active crossing. Is it an act? So it sounds like it is an active crossing?
Yeah.
See, I think, you know, what we've proposed is, is, you know, certainly normal in terms of other types of crossings in other locations. And I guess we can look at ways to make that crossing better. But I think we need to do that in broader context of understanding what else is going to be involved, what other conditions or what other requests the Board's going to have.
Sure, sure, understandable. I also have another question on the driveway going over the aqueduct. That, has there been any further communication with the Mass Historical Commission about whether or not they've found it to be reasonable, or I believe that there was supposed to be some more collaboration with them because they, they said they didn't have enough information.
Yeah, that, if I may, through the Chair. Sure. Yeah, that was, that correspondence, you know, was followed up upon afterwards, and I believe we've provided the final letter from the Historical Society about the crossing. We have their sign off. If you, their full and complete sign off for the plan that's in front of the Board.
Okay, I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
Oh, Millie, I'm not sure I know what you're talking about. Did we get a letter from?
I, I didn't see a letter, but we, in our comments that the historical resources, resources of the Watuza Reservoir, the comments from the NHC indicated that preliminary plans did not have enough information to determine the potential on the aqueduct. So if we've forgotten something to follow up on that, I didn't see it.
I have not seen that letter. So if there is something, if the applicant can forward that to me and I can share it with the planning board, that'd be great.
Sure thing.
Any other questions or comments?
While this page is up, I just had a question if, Dave, you can look at the parking lot near the retaining retention basin. We had talked that there was a berm over there, and we had said, oh, you won't be able to see the parking lot because of the berm, but by the retention basin, it looks like it goes down, like there won't be a berm there because it's two seventy-four elevation and it goes down. So that area would actually be exposed. There would not be a berm right there.
This area, we got grades at two seventy-four, which is up higher than the, this area down here, two seventy-one. So yeah, it goes down a little bit for the basin. There's still a berm on this lower side of the basin, as you can see with the contours. We kind of tie it into existing. And then this, these existing gray contours were that huge berm that we saw out there. This is the high point right in here. So, you know, this area certainly is all the way through here, is a little bit lower.
Yeah, it actually goes downhill, so there's no berm there.
But it is significantly higher than the wetlands down here, which are down about two forty, you're up at two seventy-one up here. So there is a, there is a thirty foot berm, but yeah, you know, you're here, you're up at two eighty-six. So the most of the berms through here, but there is still an existing, you know, this is still up higher than the, than the surrounding grade down at the wetlands, like where we were walking.
Right, but it would probably be even with the residential area because they were around two seventy to two eighty. So probably be at equal height as the parking lot with no berm in between.
Besides the existing natural one that we saw.
Right, because that's, but that's lower. So it's not, it's not a nine foot wall. It's not a nine foot barrier. That would block the parking lot.
Oh, in this area, no. I mean, you got a two seventy-five up here, so this is even, and then it drops down. So there is a little bit you see right here and then right in here. But yeah, the basin is typically the lowest, one of the lowest spots on site.
Yep. Okay, and then some of the other area too, it's not nine feet, if you pull it up.
Most of the parking lot, like this area in the back is, yeah, like a nine to eleven foot cut. There's a, there's a two ninety right here and a two eighty here, so that's a ten foot drop. So most of it is down low, but yeah, as you get closer to the building and through here, the grades kind of come closer together. But I do recall that we noticed that the vegetation, as we went further this way, was more dense than this area. Do you recall?
Right, but I don't think it was as high as the hill. Like, it's going to be all cut out right there where the basin is. There isn't going to be any vegetation in the basin.
The basin, all of this will be grassed.
You're right.
The whole basin interior, the only thing that's not vegetated is where you see this hex pattern. That's the maintenance path that we need for access to clean it out.
Yep.
So that small area is compacted gravel, same as all the way around. But yeah, typically the basin is the lowest part on site, but it's still, there's still, there is a berm here. I mean, you can see the grades right here.
Right, that's lower, that's two sixty-five, and the parking lot's two seventy-five. So if there's a berm, it's not going to be a barrier to the parking lot that would block the parking lot. You'd be able to see it.
There's a small area of the parking lot, yeah, or the, yeah, that may be exposed.
Yep.
But for the most, the lion's share of the parking, all the way back and through here, you have that berm.
Well, it's like forty feet per inch, so it's still a pretty big from that top area there. It's not really small. It's not like, if you measured it, it's probably a hundred feet there.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Okay, and then in the other way, it goes from two seventy-five to two eighty-three, so it's about what, eight feet or two seventy-six to two eighty-three? Okay, so it's not as high a berm as what I was picturing when we were walking, that's all.
Well, remember, the existing natural berm that was here is going to remain, and we're just tying in on the backside of it and then grading down to the parking area.
But the slopes down in the berm area or lower.
I mean, I think it is fair to say that a good portion of that parking area is going to be, you know, in line sight of at least a couple of the houses.
Right.
There is, we are proposing landscaping too, don't forget, in these areas, new trees, additional vegetation.
And if you go down and show the access drive, the access drive is two eighty-eight. So if a truck is coming around the corner there with the headlights going out over the parking lot that's lower elevation, those lights could even go across to where that lower basin is. See, it's like two eighty-four, two eighty-six.
I'd say that that's pretty much angled towards the building, though, right?
Well, how about when they're coming uphill?
Coming this way?
If you go, move it up a little. Like, if you go downwards, it's two eighty-eight. So now the headlights are coming out. I just don't want the headlights shining out over the neighborhood.
I think if we keep going straight here, though, we're gonna end up clipping the building here. And, yeah, I mean, the neighborhood's further left, planned left.
Also, if I may, I don't think, that's not in the direction of the neighborhood, that's in the.
Yeah, it's more, it's more over here. So we're looking straight like this way towards the athletic fields, almost with the building in the way. It's pretty much, it's pretty well in line. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard to tell because there's no houses on this site plan.
I don't think that you would see them. I'm not sure if you would even see them.
Now with design review, we try to get a view of what the building looks like with the houses next door, so you can actually see where the abutters are in relation to the building. Okay, that was just what I wanted to point out.
Okay, I see Laurie, do you, your other, did we see the location and screening of dumpsters in this?
Most of my comments were addressed. However, I did have a couple of follow-up comments. There, I have concern about the location of the new parking lot. So there's a new seven space parking lot on the side off of the main access drive. So my comment about that is because this is where all of the trucks are going to be making their pickups and deliveries. It's really important to have a sidewalk that'll connect to those parking spaces into the building. So if you could add a walkway, I think that's important for a safety measure.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think that we can accommodate that.
But then number six, I just wanted some clarifying language. On the revised, and it mentions the three electric charging station stalls. Of course, my expectation is that you're actually going to be installing electric charging stations, not just, you know, equipping them with the electricity for future installation. So I just wanted to clarify that.
What we're proposing at this point is to make those stations be electric vehicle ready. The, the stations themselves, you know, the, the electronic components that you plug into itself will be part of the tenant's build out requirement. And, and that's typically what's done where we do provide these stations. And, and quite honestly, that's where the majority of the work is involved and entailed, is bringing power to those locations. But the choice of which types of EV charging machines are going to be installed, per se, is really a tenant-driven decision.
So in that case, I would recommend then making that a condition of approval that those stations should be installed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. Does that sound reasonable?
And it's not something. You were gonna, something, go ahead.
I, I guess two things. First of all, no, it doesn't work. But second of all, as to conditions, we're hoping at, at some point to have a comprehensive understanding of what conditions of approval a majority of the Board are looking for so we can respond in a singular fashion when we have an entire, you know, universe as to what, what's going to be discussed. But, you know, the potential, as Israel just indicated, that the building
But, you know, the potential is, Israel just indicated, uh, that the building, uh, very well could be built on spec, but that's really a, a selection process that a tenant can make, uh, is part of theirs, so it would be problematic for us to make it a condition to, to get a occupancy.
Were there other things, Lori, on your list that you wanted to speak to?
Um, let's see, I think there was one more issue. Let's see. Um, once again, I'm confused, because at the last meeting, we were talking about the number of loading bays. And at that time, you said 33 bays. But I'm noticing on this revised decision, on sheet 102A, it's saying 28 bays. So did you make a change between the last meeting and this meeting to reduce it from 33 bays to 28 bays?
No, it's been, go ahead.
It's, it, it's been, um, I think what's been shown on the plan is 28 bays. I'm not sure if that's inclusive, I, I have to check the plan to confirm whether that's inclusive of the, uh, bays that are, uh, for, that have the drive-up ramps. Um, but what's been, I, I recognize that what was in the plan was, uh, or what was written down was 33 bays. Uh, at this point, I'd say that the, what's on the plan is what's accurate. And so the text, the text should follow what the, what the plan shows.
Okay, so the plan shows 28 bays, so that's what we're going with. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Okay, great, um, the other comment on here is related to a request for a waiver, so there's a request for the planning board, to, for a waiver for section 7.2C9, the applicant should identify looking at existing trees that are 10 inches in diameter at breast height within the construction envelope, or submit a written waiver request for planning board consideration. Comments for that request from the board? I guess especially if you are out there on the walk, is there something?
To me, the biggest trees seem like they were in front of those parking spaces, so to me, there were a lot of wetlands without a lot of big trees. Normally, I'd wanna see some intact, but if they can save those big trees out in the front. And, um, for the rest of the big trees, it actually didn't seem like they were on their property, they were way back by Algonquin. It seemed like that site had already been cleared, maybe when it was a farm, there was a lot of wetlands and a lot of smaller trees, not a lot of really big evergreens. But I think it would be great to add some big evergreens along, um, the border of the parking between the parking and the residential neighborhood, and I, I liked how they added some, I liked how they added some along the driveway. So, I, to me, I did do a, um, GIS map overview, and I didn't see a lot of big evergreens on that property, I don't know what anyone else thinks.
I think that, I thought the property was pretty mostly brushy, and I think a lot of the larger trees were kind of right, right, closer to the, over the property line. So I think it might be a bit of a overask.
Okay, any other comments or thoughts? Millie, you're on the walk as well, do you?
Yeah, I, I was, I pretty much feel the same, it was, uh, heavily forested on the side towards the residential area. Um, and even though there wasn't that much of that, that was dedicated to, um, you know, protection or preserved, they're not planning on building over there. So I, I felt like there was a, a pretty significant buffer.
Bill, you're welcome to comment regardless of whether or not you want on the walk, I don't want to exclude you.
No, I mean, my only concern is, um, you know, that this, going back to the, um, the San Board um, survey, where, you know, they have a recognized environmental condition that's potential on the site, um, that is a threat to water pollution, which is, you know, our number one condition. Um, and I'm just, I haven't heard anything from, um, from the, the company as to, you know, if they were gonna check the soil before they disturbed it, or, you know, they're gonna be adding in additional places where they're gonna be storing water.
Got it.
And you've got the wetlands that are downhill from that.
Um, so, point taken, in relation to the waiver at hand, do you agree that, that they don't need to tag, identify the location of trees?
Yeah.
In, okay, so we'll get back, we'll swing back around to that one, but in, in terms of the waiver, it seems like a majority of the board is, um, a, agreeable to that waiver. So I think that was the one item on this list. Um, was there any other, was that the only waiver? I think it was.
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, all right, so that seems like it would be fine, um, the other thing I wanted to make sure we talked about is, um, the STANTEC, so there was a correspondence, so two correspondences came. One, why don't we start with the police chief's letter, so that, I think, came in today, did the applicant have a chance to read that as well, the comments from the police chief?
Um, we received it, um, a couple hours ago, we haven't had a chance to digest in the fashion collectively.
That's okay, I understand, that happens to us too, so, uh, do the planning board members get a chance to read that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, I'll give you guys a fair chance to read that, but there are three comments from the police chief as well, one we already talked about was just about that bike trail. Um, he also brought up a shared bike lane and, um, a clearly marked crosswalk. So I'll let you read through that further, um, those look to be his primary comments, did you have a conversation with him at all, Lori, or he just submitted a memo?
I had a conversation with him.
Oh, okay, anything that you think you are sharing with the board, or does this memo cover it?
Um, yeah, we did talk a little bit about the, um, the entrance, we talked about the signage, uh, as opposed to the split entry where all trucks would be directed to go left, um, because of geometry. So he decided that he didn't want to ultimately address that in his letter. Um, I did tell him that the recommendation, uh, today is, um, signage, but that doesn't mean that that could change, it could be something other than that.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members?
All right, and are you talking about the egress to the driveway, in and out?
Yes.
And whether or not we can, uh, make a condition that trucks turn left, I know we discussed that a couple of times, only come in and out from, from the left, but that was not really, discussed further about whether or not we wanted to, to pursue that.
Yeah, so I read in the traffic study, and I, I know that you folks had talked about it previously. Um, the recommendation in the traffic study was signage.
Yeah.
Um, so I had heard rumors that, uh, the, the fire chief was concerned about having, uh, the geometry such that fire trucks would not be able to access, uh, from one direction. And so I had heard that that was abandoned at that time for the fire chief's um, but of course, I, I wasn't there for that meeting, so.
Okay, that's, that's where I thought it, it went back to just signage, but I wasn't sure.
Okay, additionally, we have comments back from Mark Bartlett at STANTEC, um, who reviewed, um, some of the responses that the applicant had brought up at the last meeting, so I assume everybody saw this as well. Um, it looks like all of these, everything that, uh, all of these, um, comments are incorporated into the current plan, is that correct? The applicant received these comments and they're all incorporated?
That's correct.
Okay, so then are any of these condition, required conditions, or are these already part of the plan?
So this has been added as a condition since, um, the original version was sent out on February 7th. So this is not in the working version for tonight's meeting, this was a, a subsequent version. And then I understand that Mark Johnny Hugh had suggested changing some of the language there, if, if I'm correct.
Okay, so
Yeah, I, I, I think, may, just to make sure we're talking about the same thing, the, the comments from STANTEC, which related to modifications to the operation and maintenance plan, were incorporated into a revised operation and maintenance plan, which I think stated February 16th, David, correct me if it's wrong. You know, we, we would expect that February 16th version, which incorporates those comments, to be incorporated in a condition of approval for compliance with that. So, as, as to the operation and maintenance plan, we're not aware of any other comments or changes that weren't part of the February 16th.
I, I don't think anything else came from STANTEC since this, this memo from him, did, did anything else come from him, Lori, I think this was the final.
No, that was it, it was just one word that you changed, Mark, uh, if I remember.
Immediately to promptly, I think.
Yeah, that was it, so it didn't seem significant to me, I don't know if the planning board feels differently.
Uh, that's not significant to me, does anybody care about the difference between immediately or promptly?
No. No, can you read the whole, what was the whole statement? Is it long? Or was it just one condition?
No, it was the inspection of, um, if there was, uh, let's see, okay, however, whenever an infiltration basin is observed to have accumulated three inches or more of sediment at any time in any part of the infiltration basin, then such sediment shall be removed immediately is option one, or promptly is option two, without waiting for the annual renewal date. So it just, there's an earlier intervention, either immediately
I'm wondering if you need, like, something quantitative versus subjective, because what's promptly, what's immediately, like, shall be cleaned within 30 days or two weeks? Like, I thought a lot of conditions for groundwater in the past, like, sometimes, don't we say, like, put like a time limit on it? Because if you say promptly, a year could be promptly for one person and not for another.
Right, do you have any recommendations on that, or do we use that in any other language that would make sense?
Um, actually, I think promptly covers it because you have to hire someone to come out there with a machine to take it out. It, it promptly could be a few days or a week, but certainly not 30 days, I would expect that could be taken care of fairly quickly. I would assume the wording promptly is adequate the way it is.
I don't know, I'd like to say, like, within two weeks or within 30 days, at least.
Or maybe we put an upper limit, like, or, you know, without waiting for annual renewal dates and no later than whatever that time period is.
Hmm. Um, I just feel when things are open-ended.
The applicant would be comfortable with a 30-day, uh, period.
Okay, does that sound, does that, is that reasonable, does that satisfy what you were trying to get at, Amy?
I guess so, yeah, unless it's too late, but I would, yeah, within 30 days, I mean, I just feel like when we go around with these subjective words, it, it, different things to different people.
Okay, so on the table, we have, um, within 30 days. Instead of immediately, so such sediment shall be removed within 30 days, and without waiting for annual renewal date, does that sound good?
Mm-hmm, as long as it's not backing up and overflowing.
Um, okay. Other than that, it sounded like, um, every, everything else that Mark suggested was, uh, Mark Bartlett, that is, was reasonable, and, um, I think that was the biggest piece, the other change was he added language, let's see. So he's underlined certain sentences for emphasis. Okay.
I'm still thinking about the 30 days, do you think Mark Bartlett would think 30 days is too long? I don't know what prompt is, I'm not sure how, um, because he had written immediately. Would he think 30 days was too long to wait? Is 14 days doable, like, two weeks, or is it too hard to get somebody to do it?
Madam Chair, if I may offer a suggestion that I think already was mentioned with the applicant's acceptance of 30 days, I think terminology or wording that says you can pick the adjective or adverb, uh, but then specify no later than 30 days, that seems, because I, I would suspect that as Mr. Litchfield said, um, it may well take place sooner than that.
Okay, so then it could read something like such sediment shall be removed promptly, without waiting for the annual rate, and no later than 30 days, or something like that.
Yes.
Any other board comments on that one?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Great, um, we also had, um, a couple, any, any other comments or questions, so Lori, we have your letter here. Any other new information that I missed, that we didn't speak to, we had a letter from, uh, the fire chief as well, the fire chief sent a letter, um, that he confirmed, he reviewed the plan, and that the access, let's see, he had a couple of comments. Um, that's not the right one, that he had worked, he had looked at the plan again and confirmed that he was okay with the plan, I don't have it right in front of me. Any other comments on the fire chief's letter? Oops, just gonna pull it up again. All right, so he's, he shared, so what the fire, so the original concern of the board was just that, um, if there was a fire, how would he access the building? So he had shared, um, some different fire code, um, for consideration, and that he had required access to three sides of the building as opposed to the original proposal of just two sides of the building. Um, so it sounded like the total proposed building length of 800 feet, making access to the center of the building from both sides, 400 feet, which is compliant with the code. Um, so let's see, any questions or comments on that?
Did he actually tell the applicant how he gets to the back, does he drive? Did they actually drive the truck out back on that gravel to get to that third side? No? They just reached the ladder?
Well, you have a fire, you, there's a plan on the, there's a, um, fire truck access plan in there, a page in there.
Yep.
And it looks like it shows the fire truck needs to pull down the side and then reverse out. So, um, Lori, the fire chief was fine with pulling down that side and reversing out, can we assume that that's the case?
So it was my understanding from speaking to him on the phone, that they would likely dr, um, drag the lines through the building itself. And they would access the fire from, through the building. So they wouldn't be driving the truck behind the building.
Okay. Hmm.
So they did say if aerial apparatus are needed, So they did say if aerial apparatus are needed along the Charlie side, there is sufficient room and access for them to set up. A more critical component is the location of the FDCs for the sprinkler system, and that is normally addressed during the building plan review process.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about that part. That part's taken care of separately.
Probably during the building permit. You meant to say?
Yes, the building plan review process. So that's something I think in the past we've looked at putting in things about the um fire safety, but it sounded like that's covered in the building permit process and we don't have to necessarily cover that. Is that correct? I just want to really, I'm just asking like, we don't need to put anything about the sprinkler systems or anything like that. That's something that 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 is part of the building permit process and we don't have to worry about that part of it.
I I did recommend, so this is a standard uh condition that I put in and um so I did recommend hydrants and other fire suppression services and connections shall be designed, installed and inspected in accordance with Northborough Fire Department requirements.
Okay, so that was so in my, the version I'm looking at, that's um condition L and that covers it.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions on the materials that we have? Right, I would, oh, go ahead today.
Sorry, I, is there any mention or is there any uh intention of having any generators or anything? Would that be typical for where?
It it uh through you, Madam Chair, um it it would prob, it could be uh depending on uh the desires of a specific tenant and what their needs might be.
Okay, so that would be something that comes up when we find a tenant.
I would think so. I did, I remember the building, uh doesn't automatically have a design, does it, Israel?
It does not.
Okay.
So Amy, you have a question?
Yeah, the question. I wanted to um ask a couple of questions about the um environmental site assessment report. I have a question for Fred. It's for the applicant. The environmental site assessment did say there were two monitoring wells. Have those met wells ever brought forth any reports? Said they were on like the westerly part of the site.
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
Do we know who put those in?
I don't know. I haven't looked at that um report and that specific issue uh or comment within the report. I'd have to review the report.
Fred, have you ever received any reports from those monitoring wells?
Not that I recall.
So there's no application in front of the groundwater committee or anything? Like it doesn't? It never came in front of anybody? Someone just put in monitoring wells?
Well, I would expect that to be a responsibility of the owner, but the groundwater committee wouldn't necessarily get monitoring well reports if they didn't require them in some kind of approval.
Okay. Um, do you know what the requirements are from the state and what the town's liability would be? If there was anything found within these monitoring wells? Like, would it fall back on the?
Um, yeah, it's not, I'm sure through through you. At at this point, I'm not even sure what those monitoring wells were for. Monitoring wells can be installed to just monitor groundwater and have nothing to do with any kind of environmental release. So I'm not sure what the wells were installed for. I can review the the report, but I'm not. I think there are implications and assumptions that underlie the questions that you're asking with respect to these monitoring well that I'm not sure um if if those assumptions are accurate.
Okay, I'm just concerned because the report did, as you know, find some VOCs that were up gradient. And I just, and they mentioned in the report that there were two monitoring wells and these were also near the conservation restriction on the easterly side. And if it was found on the property, I didn't know who would be responsible and who holds the conservation restrictions. Like if the if Conservation Commission of North holds the conservation restriction for the property on the Marlboro side, would that mean the town would be liable for cleanup if they found contaminants over there?
Are you asking me to opine on the towns?
That that that's certainly not a question of the applicant. I'm I'm not sure.
I just want to know who's liable.
So Attorney Dineski, if if the conservation restriction then be is the towns and then there is something, some sort of environmental compliance required, who is responsible? Is it then the town?
You're right.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, the law is that if there isn't a relea- a release on property of an owner, the the responsible person uh we're somewhat creating a fairly extensive hypothetical here, but I would not see on just the fact that a conservation restriction is held, that the holder of that restriction would then take on a liability that is otherwise uh resting with the owner of the property under the regulatory scheme.
So when there's a conservation restriction, the owner still owns the property, but the town, if they if they hold the conservation restriction, then the town just holds the restriction?
Right. A restriction that is held and can be held and as I understand it in this instance, all the restrictions aren't relieved from the ownership of the property in question. And that's actually a fairly common arrangement for a conservation restriction.
Mm hmm. But they still own the property. So if it was uncovered, there was something there, then they would be responsible for cleanup, you're saying?
The owner is the responsible party under the statute.
Mm hmm. But there's no way to find out if there's something there, if it's not being tested for they're just monitoring wells for amount of groundwater versus specific testing. We wouldn't know that.
If, well, we have a situation where wells apparently were installed by others. We don't know basically the reasons. It's possible certainly that we could find that. And wells can be installed or could be installed for either just testing or monitoring or for the specific purpose of keeping track of or measuring whether there had been any particular release. Um, the issue here is that we don't have at this point for this discussion all of the background information regarding the installation and the particular reasons for the installation.
Since it's in an overlay protection district for the town in Northborough, which is supposed to protect our wells, shouldn't we know if something there? If it's been flagged in the environmental site assessment, like how do you know when you should go to phase two?
If I may, again, when you're saying that they've been flagged again is is making an assumption that these wells were installed for monitoring some kind of spill. There are any number of reasons why wells can be installed that have nothing to do with with monitoring environmental spill. It can be installed for the purpose of potentially installing a drinking water well or to design a stormwater management system. So I mean, I I just. I'm, I think it's the the question, the the assumption that um that they were installed to and to monitor a spill, I I just don't know where you're getting um that information from. And and I'm happy to go back and look at the report and see whether, you know, what what it says with respect to the wells.
Right. I guess I was confusing the two things. It's not really the wells, but the environmental site assessment did say that there were REC's or I don't know the exact terminology. But on the Marlboro line on Hayes Memorial Drive, they found a lot of spills and it was on the border of this property. So they were flagging that, you know, that it was there and that some of the areas were up gradient. And I just wanted to know how far the town would go as, you know, to check into this to make sure it's not in our groundwater. And that we're protecting ourselves and we're not going to be responsible for cleanup or if someone gets sick or anything. I didn't know far as a board we could go. Can we ask for um to do some monitoring wells and check them out or some soil tests? Since this is on our groundwater overlay.
Um, so Attorney Dineski, do you know the best way to handle? So at this point, we have a report that says the upgrading release constitutes a recognized environmental concern to the subject site. So specific to this site is a a recognized environmental concern. So what is the board's obligation to um speak to that or who who is responsible? It seems like we can never figure out who how to reconcile this and and not find ourselves in trouble or in a liability we didn't anticipate in the future.
On the liability question, Madam Chair, I think it's, as I stated previously, liability rests with the owner. Where we are talking about a condition of property off the site of the tenant property, I would recommend that as was offered by the applicant, the report be reviewed and additional information be provided. Typically, you would not be creating uh an obligation or a condition regarding an issue that exists on property that is not the subject of an application for you, at least in this kind of circumstance.
Um, okay, so for me, I'm just primarily concerned about whatever REC's are um specific to this subject site. So I understand that we're not you know, whatever's happening on other properties or sites is not our responsibility, but for this, for any sort of environmental concern on this property, I just want to make sure we understand our our obligation. And that's fine. We can share this. This is a report that came to us from the applicant, so we can um give them time to look at it. The um Amy, one question I have though, were the monitoring wells on this on the site or was it on the Marlboro on the other property?
Um, they were on this site instead on the westerly portion of property H. I don't have it open in front of me right now, but it made it sound like they were actually on this site.
Okay, so I guess that's something we need to um go back and look at.
I did read in there uh in San Bern's opinion that they could recommend a um an issue erect to the subject site based on those wells not having been monitored or I believe sampled since like 1996. So I think it's been a while since they've been sampled or monitored or whatever they were put in for. Now, could our board have Sand Tech, who is our expert on our side, review the ESA and give his opinion?
Well, I I, you know, if if I might, I I don't want to get too far afield from where we are. Um, there was no reference in the 2020 decision of this board to the Sandpoint head report and to the environmental conditions, grounds of disapproval. And the remand Mavick came back to this board according to the court to determine whether the snow storage plan and the operation and maintenance plan, which was criticized and based as its grounds for denial by the board 2020, could be improved by the applicant. And that's what we've done.
But this report stood and came in after that decision was made, like, but it it has to do with these two properties. And I feel it was a planning board where we're supposed to protect the environmental qualities of the town, do adequate adequate reviews, talk about the environmental quality and community character. It would be remiss of us to ignore an environmental site assessment that came back, even if it was after the decision, because it wasn't brought to our attention till after the decision. But it doesn't mean we can unsee what we've now seen. I feel like we'd be remiss as a board to just pretend like we didn't see it. It's on our groundwater and this site is like, what was it, like 32 acres of wetlands and it's all on the groundwater where all the houses were partially on groundwater. This is the one site that is the most environmentally concerning with Star Brook and with groundwater one, groundwater three. And to have that come back and report and say, no, we have to pretend like we didn't see it. I just can't pretend that I didn't see it.
Okay, so Attorney Dineski, what do you recommend? And I do see in the um report, it's the two well, two monitoring wells were observed in the Upland Western portion of the site. So they are in the site. Um, we wondered that before. Attorney Dineski, what do you recommend? Just giving time to review this and?
Yes, I, where the applicant is offered to go back and review and provide a uh report or additional information, I think that is appropriate so that the board is aware. Under the remand order, there are two particular subjects of focus with respect to the groundwater protection special permit. This, in my view, is general information that is relevant for the board to know. The question's been raised. I think it's appropriate to determine as best as possible uh how some of these questions might be answered. And we do have an offer to provide an update, so pending that, that would be my recommendation as to how to proceed.
Okay, board members, does that sound like a good next step for that?
Well, for me, I'd like our expert to also review it. And if we're not allowed to have that happen, then we'd like something in writing in from Attorney Dineski and the Board of Health to say that in their opinion this is something the planning board can't look into and they can't put a condition on. You know, I think our Board of Health should know about it. I think I think it's serious just to make sure that there isn't a problem there.
Um, did did Mark Bartlett look at this? He didn't, he looked at this or he didn't look at this? Is it appropriate for him to scan through this on so we have a sense of comfort if nothing else?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bartlett did not look at this particular issue. You could certainly ask him to do so. The question is going to be in what forum or setting, if there's a need for any further action, that action to take place. And so I think, as I've said, we have a situation where we don't have a complete story yet as to why the wells are there and the backstory. I at this point, as the background has been presented, do not see a a direct connection for this special permit application, but that doesn't mean that this is not an issue that the town as a town could not uh make further inquiry on. The question might be again for which body and under which setting. So there may be a reason for the Board of Health, for example, to make an inquiry or perhaps even another body. But I would recommend again that we get some further report and if the board wants to ask uh Mr. Bartlett to review, I don't know whether this is something he would say uh is within his purview, but uh to the extent that the board is interested, we could certainly inquire about that.
Okay, I think I'm here. So I'm hearing two th- two concerns. One is if it's not this body, we just want to know which body is it? So that's one point you brought up, Attorney Dineski. And then if there is an opportunity to have an expert just say in a in a norm, you know, in any ti- any time this happens, this is the way it works. And this is the body that takes. And this is the body that takes care of it. And if Mark knows, Mark Bartlett knows that answer, that's great. If he doesn't, I guess we'll take it from there. But if he can like quickly solve that, I think it'll save us a lot of grief. If it's something he runs into all the time and knows the answer to, it saves us from spinning round and round, in my opinion.
Madam Chair, if I may make a comment to clarify. Uh, I just want to clarify what um what I said earlier with respect to follow-up. When I was asked the question, or I guess when I was responding to the question of the wells, I wasn't, I didn't come to this meeting prepared um uh to answer questions with respect to when the wells were installed and what the purpose of the wells were for. And so my, my response was that I would follow up and, and review the report that was submitted so that I could refresh my memory on what um the report said and, and, and I guess um confirm or provide any additional, you know, commentary at the next hearing with respect to what that report said. But I, I was not offering to provide any additional report or any additional kind of um summary document. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. That makes sense. All right. So why don't we do that as a next step? And then um Laurie, is it possible to reach out to Mark Bartlett and just get his, if it's something he looks at or thinks he can have the expertise in?
Sure. Uh. So you want me to send him the phase one report and ask him if he can review it and provide a comment letter? Is, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, just recommendations on um in his experience. What is where, where does this board have a role, if any, or what is, and what if not us, if he knows who, is it the Board of Health? Is there another body that needs to consider this at all? Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, before, I want to um open it up to public comments, and I know we got some letters as well. Are there any public comments at this time? Okay, I see one here. Okay, from Jean Cahill. If you wanted to say your name and address?
Sure. Uh, Jean Cahill, one day. Um, I'm uh the environmental risk assessor, so I'm familiar with contaminated sites and with TCE and other VOCs. Um, and I'd be happy to opine about that. But um if an environmental assessment was done and there was an REC, a recognized environmental condition, up gradient, there would certainly have been testing. And I think I would ask the board to um ask the client, ask the applicant to please provide that data, because it will give us the assurance that nothing is being hidden and um that the obligation to report, if it was above standard, was followed through. Um. Secondly, I have great concern about losing the site because it's such an ecological jewel. Northborough has so little um intact corridor and habitat. And to um see it divided this way um for the purpose of another warehouse is just it, it's a bit of a take your breath away kind of, kind of, um, kind of a thing that we're looking at. Um, we're in such a climate emergency. We're in such a biodiversity emergency. I just attended a webinar today where they said, if you think the climate emergency is critical, the biodiversity emergency is ten times worse. And there are places where they're putting in as much mitigation of impact uh as possible, and that includes pollinator meadows. So you don't just lay down turf, you don't lay down aggregate, you put meadows, pollinators, you, you limit the lighting because lighting has such a drastic effect on, on animal life and their ability to reproduce, their ability to exist. Um, we are not doing any of that in the site. I'm, I'm very uh kind of amused to hear about three possible EV chargers in such a large parking lot. We're going to an electric vehicle society. Many of us will drive smaller vehicles with smaller batteries. We will need charging infrastructure. And to not see that even um considered in the size of this parking lot. I just feel like we're, we're so many decades behind in our thinking on this. And as developers, as people who are using concrete, which is having such a large climate impact, I'm just astonished and um would ask the board to put as many conditions as you can on not allowed, not allowing chemicals to be applied to the property for landscaping purposes, putting in as much of environmental mitigation, solar panels on buildings, solar panel canopies on your parking lots and lighting that will not impact those few animals left in the stir brook. Uh, what, wetland. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Uh, we received a few letters since the last hearing. We had one come in. Let's see. And Laurie, did the applicant receive any letters that came in as well?
Yes, I forward all of the um the mail that comes in directly to the applicant. As soon as I received it, I forward it to you and then I forwarded it to them.
Great. Thank you so much. Um. There's one, I know we got one from Jack Wickstead, but there's another one that we got. Um. Just trying to find it. Oh, Bruce Wentworth um sent in a message. Um, let's see. And his comments for just how to avoid traffic entering the site um from the west, just asking for clarification there. And um suggested there could be an interest to the property if a road built that exited across from Cedar Hill Road versus to where it comes out now. Just to help reduce traffic compared to the current entrance now placed near Jenkins. Um, and just request to, if this project is going to happen, to find ways to ease the impact on the residents close by. The entrance closer from Cedar Hill Road would be a better design and one that current, that better than the one currently proposed the other, other end of the property. So that was Bruce Wentworth from Twenty Seven Ridge Road. Um, and then had a letter come in. It was a lengthy letter, so.
Carrie, I don't think I received that letter. So if you could forward that to me, that'd be great for the file.
Oh, sure.
From Bruce?
Oh, from Bruce? Did that not go to anybody? I thought it did. Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Um.
Yeah, applicant doesn't have.
I did not recall seeing it.
I always assume that it goes to planning board. I will send that to you guys.
Thank you.
Let's see. And Laurie, you can forward it on as well. Sorry about that. Okay, I just forwarded that to you. Um, then we had a email that came in from Jack Wickstead. So a couple of things um in his letter to the board. Okay. Uh, so this was a longer letter. Did everybody get this one? This looks like it did go to the entire planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so a couple of things that he brought forward. One is um about the threat from criteria one, the threat of air or water pollution. Um, felt that we have ample evidence that water pollution from the VOCs um may well be present here and also commented that there are monitoring wells present on the property. So um asked if the applicant could explain why those wells are present. So that's something we already covered tonight. Um. We have, the, the town has the phase one report. Um, should we determine if a phase two study needs to be done? Um. Make sure that we understand any possible contamination on the site. If there aren't any VOCs, that's fine, but if we should, until we look, we won't know, we won't know the answer to that. Um, he commented for criteria three of site plan approval, um improving vehicle egress. So just commented how the driveway could be redesigned to ensure heavy vehicles enter and exit to the east. Um, let's see. Criteria five, um reducing visual intrusion by controlling visibility of parking. Um, felt that the parking lot could be placed on the other side of the building away from residence. Then the bulk of the building would shield the parking lot from residences. Um, so the, the resident attached a map with a superimposed version of the plan on the, uh, what he got from, it looks like GIS. Um, just to show the proximity to the neighborhood. Um, he thought that the light spill from the parking lot was a concern, the plowing, the traffic noise. Um, all of that could be shielded by the building if that were redesigned. Um. Let's see. Thought that the, the, if that, the reason, if it can't be done, that, the, the reason is because the, the resident felt the building is too big. Um. Criteria six, compatibility with surrounding areas and scale of design. Did not think it was scalable. Commented that he thought it was twice as long as White Park, the same size as an aircraft carrier and seven hundred feet from residential. Um, and then he, that's right, included the map. Um, he claimed that the building's closer to more than twenty houses than it is to the next warehouse of this size. Um. Let's see, the adjacent industrial properties are actually only twenty thousand square feet in size. The proposed use is seven times the size of any adjacent use in this email. Um, fifty times the size of any house in the vicinity. Um, even can scaring to the ADU pile building, that, that building is sixty thousand square feet in size. This is two point five times the size of ADU pile. Um, let's see. And then just a comment about the, the neighbors not, the neighbors didn't protest the other warehouses, ADU pile, FedEx or Amazon um or three oh one, because those properties weren't adjacent to residential homes. But in this case, because it's real, it isn't residential homes, the resident just asked that the applicant has respect for the people who live in the town. Um, and again, the feeling this site was out of scale. I think that was the overview of that letter we got. Okay. Um, okay. I think that's it. I don't think we got any other letters that came in. Just want to double check. I covered them. Okay. Any other comments then? If I didn't miss anything else, any other comments from the public at this time? Okay. I don't think any additional comments from the public. Any additional comments from, oh, Laurie, you have a question? Did you see another letter I missed?
I received an email from uh, I think it's Mario Lopez. Manny, Manny Lopez saying that he can't, for some reason, um access the meeting via the phone line. So um, not quite sure what the issue is. I did speak to him earlier today and I told him about the star, star nine and the star six. Um, I'm not sure if the phone number is wrong. Uh, Owen, possibly you can read off the phone number?
Yes, I can read off the phone number. Three zero one, seven one, five, eight, five, nine, two.
Three zero one. Can you go on?
Seven one five.
Seven one five.
Eight, five, nine, two.
Eight, five, nine, two. Okay. So we'll see if he uh calls in.
Um. Oh, so you're emailing him that number? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, I just emailed it to him.
Okay, great. So if we see him, um, come on, or raise his hand, we'll certainly address his comments. Uh, but right now I don't see um anybody with that name in the audience. So we'll hold for him. And Owen, if you happen to see him and I don't, just let me know. If you see a phone number, come on, um, feel free to just jump in and let me know.
All right.
Okay, um. Other comments or questions? Okay, um, I think there is nothing else in terms of the special permit, the groundwater special permit. I think we've reviewed that. I think we're at a point where we're considering the site plan. So I think it may make sense at this point to just talk through um possible conditions for this plan. I know we had um a, a list that was started already at this point. What I wanted to do is to make sure that we're all using the same version. I know there is just too much back and forth outside of the board being able to discuss. I want to make sure that everybody um has a chance to look where we are for additions, for any board members to propose additional question, um, conditions, staff to propose any additional conditions, and then obviously the applicant to work through um what you feel um is acceptable, not acceptable in your mind, and then, and figure out where to go from there. So I'm looking at um. Okay, Laurie, did you have something?
I just got a follow-up email from Manny Lopez, but I don't understand his asking. He sent an email saying that is the number I am calling and messages, meeting has not yet started. So don't uh I don't know how to help.
Um, is that the correct, do we know that's the correct phone number?
I wonder if he's not putting in the passcode. Maybe that's the problem.
That could be it.
Okay, I'll, I'll email him the passcode. Maybe that'll fix.
Do you need it or do you know?
I wonder, Owen.
Handy, that would be great. You save me from looking.
Are you ready?
Maybe, Owen, maybe you can call it with your phone and see if you can connect, see if it works.
Passcode. If you could just give it to me, that's good.
Five, three, one, seven, three, nine.
It's one, seven, three, nine.
Yep.
Okay. I tried to do it on my phone, but I, I don't think I can. I've never done it.
But that's the passcode, not the meeting ID.
Maybe it's not working. If someone has had to try. I think Owen's gonna try it.
I thought it's five, one, three.
He said he's not getting to the passcode.
So he needs a um.
Maybe I can just ask him to email his comments.
So I don't know if this is a problem, but we don't have the webinar ID on the agenda. So we only list the passcode, not the webinar ID. Okay.
Both in general, I have.
Oh, you have it on your agenda?
Yep. One off of the town website.
Oh, that's good then. Okay. Um.
Carrie?
Yeah.
So I just called in and it's working. Um, you have to call in and then you put in the webinar ID, the eight, nine, zero, four, nine, nine, zero, nine, four, oh, eight. And then it asks you for the passcode
Mm-hmm.
of the five, three, one, seven, three, nine, but it does go through. It does work.
Okay, that's good. So it just maybe seem like a user error. I just want to make sure it's not an error that the public isn't able to access the public hearing. But it sounds like that's not the case. We're able to successfully get to the meeting. So I guess if you could just email us, um. What we'll take into consideration is email. Okay. So Laurie, if you hear from her, just let us know.
Okay, shall do. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So in any case, um, want to start with, um, there was a version, a baseline version of the conditions that we had had to start. So what I was going to do is um take a look at those. And then from there, um, I think board members had other conditions for consideration. Would I ask? Would I ask the board to just, just try to figure out. If there's any, based on the site plan criteria, if the condition is related to criteria to kind of organize it that way, so that we don't just. You know, go through, so it keeps some sort of order, and if, if we have duplicates, we can sort of work through that. At the same time, so we don't have to go round and round and just try to keep it as organized as possible. So first what I'll do is see. Do board members have additional conditions to add to the. The version that town council had looked at at this point.
I have a list.
If I might, I'm, I'm a little confused because I don't think I've got. I, I know I don't have the same visibility you all have. What I have is the last version that's been shared with the applicant. Is dated February 17th, 2023 working document. Is, is that what you're working with, or are you working with something else as a agenda of sorts?
Yep, I'm working with the last version that came to the board. Before our hearing last week, because the board didn't have a discussion on condition, so there should be nothing that's from the board. That. Sixteen, so I have February 7th, the last version that the board received.
Mark, that is the version that I emailed you that you tracked. So that's the first version you received.
Okay.
I just made a list. Of conditions that I had that went along with the criteria, just to keep it easier, and then. You know, if we, like you were just saying, if you want to merge them all in after.
Okay, so I'm gonna pull it up so that everybody's looking at the same thing, and we don't have to worry about that, so give me one second.
There were so many versions starting that I just listed my conditions.
Yep, that's the problem. Let's see. So one second. Oops, I, hold on, I can hear. I think we do have. We must have Manny on the line. We're just gonna allow him to talk before we jump to conditions. Hi Manny, is that you on the line?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, sorry about that confusion there, I'm glad you're.
Oh, that's okay. I was looking at the, I actually, when I read the agenda, I saw the information for the Zoom. And then I saw what they called, what you call a one tap mobile member. And it didn't have any ID or password associated with that, so I did not connect the ID stuff for the Zoom to the phone number. So I guess that was an operator, an issue with regards to understanding the meeting notice.
No problem.
So yeah, no, I appreciate taking the effort to get me a chance. Some of the stuff has already been raised. I, I think it's good that the discussion on the path, because. I, I've lived here a long time, and like a lot of other folks, most people take the trail path up on the slope that goes up on the north side of the aqueduct. Because the embankments are too steep, so I, I, I appreciate that there's consideration to make sure that the path there that can be used still. For walking and biking, and also would safe crossing if this project goes forward. One of the other things is, is that there was a comment made environmentally about light and noise pollution, and those are two that I'm worried about. Noise I can hear from my house at 96 Barton Street, when you hear the backup alarms, or when they're doing snow removal in winter time. Lights, I assume, I don't get bothered by lights, but I suspect that the stones that live at the end of corner alignment in Bartlett. And the people who live down on the hole there, adjacent to the property, probably see the lights for sure. One of the things that I, I keep familiar with that I didn't hear come up today was the question on traffic studies. I don't know how we can be reviewing. Traffic studies and impacts and safety and stuff, when last meeting, the, the developer was not able to provide in a. An operations plan that would identify tenant usage, hours of operating, the amount of traffic. The only numbers that are being thrown out for traffic aren't based on anything, at least they're not based on the actual. Intended operations plan for the building, which seems to be a big disconnect on. Basically, like we would be approving the building with a blank check, because it's not tied to any operations plan. So to me, that seems like an awfully big gap to, to approve something when you don't know what it's actually going to be used for from an operations standpoint. The other commentary I'd like to make a comment on is that, is talking about like the historical aspect of the. And questions about not being adequate analysis of it. I, I think those of us that have been here know. That this is an 1897 constructed aqueduct that structurally is brick. It's had a spray coating applied to provide ceiling to minimize water intrusion and leaking from the aqueduct. Which they had with the bricks, but it's still from a structural load standpoint, it's a brick structure from 1897. So the static load analysis that was done by Landen, that was paid for by the terrorists and submitted to the N W R A and the historical group. Conduct only a static load test based on a fire truck and a cement truck. He did a dynamic load analysis to look at what happens with, say, tractor trailer trucks, like an 80,000 pound fully loaded tractor foot truck. And what speeds would it be going across and what road conditions, because. Road conditions and speed have an impact on vibration, which on dynamic loading can have a significant impact on the structural integrity of an old brick conduit. I believe that's what the N W R A and the historical people are questioning is, that the, that analysis is missing. And the only analysis that's been done to date that I've got through a public records request. Is a static load test. There's been no evidence of it through my public records request. So I believe that's still an open issue to show how they're safeguarding with their volume of traffic. You know, that the integrity of that thing is going to be maintained. I also question how many changes there's been to this plan. When most of the approvals through N W R A, Mass Out Life, and all these agencies at the state, and, and even local level. There's been a lot of changes, and I don't see any evidence that says that these agencies that approved things back in, say, 2019 or 2020. Have been kept abreast of the changes to the plan and made sure that their original approval still applies to the current plan. How do we know that? I'm trying to contact Fish and Wildlife, because I don't see, I see that they're destroying an acre plus of. Protect habitat for the blue spotted salamander, and so far of every single development they've done, they've intruded upon and destroyed habitat. And what they do is they trade by creating conservation. Well, that doesn't replenish habitat. And so this will be the third instance on this piece of property that will be destroying habitat. And I think one of the other callers raises, I think both called, two other callers raised questions about, you know, wildlife and watershed issues, and. I see any assessment or study done to show how going from a natural watershed into a wetland area that feeds into a protected habitat area. How does that equate to a man-made managed drainage system? That alters not just the, the method of water flow into the watershed in these protected habitats. But also changes the amount of nutrients that will flow in that feed these protected habitats. Nothing in, in the public records that's been even looked at. So I don't know how we're protecting the spotted salamander, that's a rare species protected by the state. And so. So those are some of the things I think I, fire department come back, and one of the questions that we're trying to do is obviously the residents are up in arms, because, well, we're tired of the trucks coming through our. And it's a safety and all kinds of issues. And so the discussion about having a controlled entrance slash exit, so as not to go to, to basically disincentivize anybody trying to come in from the residential section. The fire department said they can't do that because of fire truck access. Question is to the fire department, is it not possible to have a access that can be activated in the case that an alarm goes off, a gate gets opened? So a fire truck can come in from North Borough Fire Department? But that during other normal operating hours, that access, that side of the drive entrance is cut off, forcing the drivers to come only from. The industrial park side, not the residential side. That seems like another alternative. To achieve the same thing, rather than just say we're gonna put a sign up, because signs don't work. We still have. Sex, Amazon, and A D U pile trucks coming down Bartlett Street, so the sign's nice, it shows a good intent, but. You know, action speaks a lot more than words in the case of signs, so. I, I would think we need to be more positive if this goes forward to, to try to enforce something like that, so. So those are my main points, and I really do appreciate extending this to give me a chance to put these on the table for, for, for consideration.
Sorry there Manny, I said, thank you so much for your comments, I think it was on mute. Okay, one question then, coming out of that, for the. Just confirming all of the other approvals that were received at this point, do all of those approvals still stand? Is there any sort of? So it sounds like Millie brought up one that needs further. Clarification, that was at the NIH letter Millie brought up?
Yeah, just, I, I never saw the letter from the Massachusetts Historical Commission that said the aqueduct was. Not going to be historically. Damaged. By use or the structure. So apparently there's reference to one that was written on July 10th, 2020, but I just, I don't have a copy of it.
So we're just looking for a copy of that.
Yep.
Is there any difference? Did the applicant choose to just do the static load test than the dynamic load, or is there a reason behind that?
We, we submitted everything that the R A asked for. We went back and forth, we received our approval, longstanding approval from them. There's no reason to go back and revisit that. That crossing has not changed in design. And for the historic commission, the court findings made it very clear that. That there was no historical. Impact, impact to the project. And the M W R A governs, you know, the impact to the aqueduct. We've cleared that with them. A few years ago. Not sure what.
So it sounds like, yeah, it just sounds like that's not a part of the pack for some reason, so I think that's the one missing letter we don't have.
Okay, if, if the court assumed you guys had that letter, but I hadn't seen it, that was just, no, you know.
We're, we're happy to provide a copy of the, of the letter. Plans have not changed in that location. I respect the comments made by the gentleman that was just on the phone, there were probably. I don't know, 10 things that were inaccurate about the things that he said, but. I don't think it's productive to. Get into a back and forth with every public comment.
One question I had is we already talked about the driveway, forcing the truck traffic to go left, which would be east. And in the last minutes that I read, we had talked about it as a board, but it never went to the fire department. The fire chief actually looked at it and denied it, or it was never really brought up, because from all the minutes I see, we never got that far.
Laura, did the fire chief ever comment further that we are aware of? It may have just been, we don't have that on file.
Fire chief just commented in 2023 in response to your request.
No, Amy's asking about the, if there's ever a resolution, if we ever had anything back from the fire chief. It sounds like there's nothing on file.
About the driveway going left, we had talked about it, and then at the very end of the meeting. It, we were talking about it, and we said we never even brought it forward to him.
Yes, I wasn't part of the public hearings at that time, so I'm unsure of what happened.
Yeah, the, if I could just quickly, signage that we proposed recently in the updated February 6th 20. Plans shows both called out in the layup material, planted in the details. A sign that says left-hand turns only for trucks, so it's only for the truck traffic. So.
I guess my question was, did the design that was way back in 2020, did any left-hand turn design ever get run by the fire chief? We talked about it, but I don't think he ever actually looked at it.
I'm not sure how the fire department would comment on the trucks leaving the facility in which direction they turn.
No, it was going into it, we, they were concerned their trucks couldn't make that turn or something, and we were gonna bring it to the fire department. I don't know if anything ever came out.
We're talking about design.
Oh, fire trucks making the turn into the site?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, we have a fire truck turning plan.
What they're talking about is restricting the geometry of the access driveway, so trucks physically cannot turn right. So that's, that's what they're discussing.
Thank you.
And, and that's kind of what I was asking about earlier, is I didn't see what the resolution was from that discussion way back.
My recollection of the discussion was there wasn't even a consensus along the board. And one of the reasons it wasn't a consensus along the board was that we were not going to agree to restrict passenger vehicles from taking. A direction, a right-hand turn out of the site. It raised a bunch of issues, and it wasn't a consensus, and it didn't proceed. The plan that you have before you is the plan that we went to trial on, is the plans before you.
Okay, so the fire chief never did see a different layout of the driveway?
I didn't, I didn't say that, you did. I said, with my recollection.
Okay, well, it seems like that we won't know, or it didn't happen, or whatever the case. Did you have a comment related to that, Amy, or?
Well, I have seen on other warehouse site plans where that, one of the conditions was. Construct the driveway to make left turn only. The design of the driveway, and it, we had talked about it in the past, so my question was. If the fire chief ever got to look at the design, because there was a design. At one time that showed a driveway that only, the trucks can only go left. And maybe we could go back and condition that. And maybe we won't. I just was gonna, I was just trying to ask if the fire chief ever looked at it. But I guess.
Okay, well, why don't we start, oh, go ahead.
Nope, but I guess I, I didn't know we could even do it as a condition, but I was reviewing. A site plan from Sutton, and they had a condition that the road be designed, the accessway be designed to force a left turn.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we put a, we have at this point, I'm just looking at a baseline of conditions to start there. Okay, so, right here I have applicant shall comply with all applicable bylaws and rules. Can everybody see that? Is that the right version I'm sharing?
Yep.
Okay, great. So this is the version that came to the board before our last hearing. I think the applicant looked at this as well. So this is what I'm considering our baseline set of conditions. So I think the board, especially since this was sent to everybody prior to the last hearing. I'd like to give the board a chance to first, are there any conditions here that you would either edit? Or have, we can, I'm, so I'm gonna handle additions after, but I want to make sure that what we have on the table here, are there any edits or. Comments to the current set?
I had the question for the applicant. I noticed he had crossed out the building shall be heated with natural gas. I was wondering if you could explain what it's being heated with?
Sorry, it's on mute. It's, it's an option as is electricity.
So it won't be oil, so there probably should be a condition, because usually I. Usually for groundwater, they don't want it to be heated by oil, so I just wanted to make sure. If it doesn't have the condition that it shall be heated with natural gas, we could say, shall be heated with national, natural gas or electricity.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone's taken, the way I did my list, I do have changes to some of these, but I don't know. Which ones, like up top? which ones, like up top where it talked about the construction vehicles.
Sure, hold on. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in changes in red. So everybody's going to be aware of what they are. Okay.
Where it said hours of operation related to construction on E. Um, after loaders cannot load trucks prior to 7:30, I had a comment that construction trucks will be prohibited, shall be prohibited for turning right. So although I want the all vehicles to also turn left, I also want to make sure that it's known that construction vehicles also have to turn left.
Oh, so am I looking at the wrong one right now?
Nope, on E, I just added a note at the end saying construction vehicles shall be prohibited from turning right. Or you can say shall turn left. Either way. I definitely want all vehicles to turn left, but I wanted to make sure it was also part of the construction vehicles. Do you think it has to say construction vehicles shall turn left when exiting the parking lot or shall enter and exit from the east? So it covers both ways? Maybe construction vehicle shall exit and enter from the east? Does that make sense?
So I think the heart of this is just making sure that we include construction vehicles and whatever traffic that's happening at this site, whether it's traffic by way of the business or construction. So I would just say that we would want to mirror, if, if that applies to general, that we'd mirror with the same language. So I can talk more about that. Um, I had some comments about, um, there was something that we got a message from the Conservation Commission about having to go for another permit there and that it negated the need for an earthwork. Oh, Lori, you have something there?
Um, yeah, I, I wonder, just for my sake, um, as somebody who's trying to keep track of things, would it be possible for us to just go condition by condition? Um, so, you know, if nobody has comments, like for example, on that last condition that we were on, I know Mark had submitted a change that said loaders cannot load trucks prior to 7:00 AM. So that way I can get a consensus on each individual condition where everybody is providing their feedback and then we can just knock it out once and for all, instead of dancing around to, you know, one person's comments, then we move on, go to another person's comments. It's just going to be really hard for me to keep track.
Yep, sure. No problem. Okay, so we'll start from the top. So this one is pretty standard. Any concern on A?
I'm just going to print mine out because I did it a different way. I actually just listed all my conditions, but I didn't work them into a decision because you know, I didn't know where they would fall in the condition.
Well, how about after, we'll go through what's on this sheet here and then we'll look at like additional and how it fits with the criteria. So we do that, like go back. So for what we have on the table here, um, we'll just go down through the list to clean that, take care of that. Next part would be any additional conditions.
Sure.
Okay, and so this A is pretty standard. Any comments on this one? B.
We had provided comments previously.
Okay, do you have, what would you like? What is your suggested change here?
Um, after the third line where it says financing add or transfer to an affiliated entity. And then in the next phrase, delete more than 50% and substitute substantially all.
Okay, so we have a copy of these edits. Any board comments on, um, the applicant's proposed changes there?
Well, he was taking out 50% and saying substantially all. I think we do need a number. Because substantially all, I said, it would mean different things to different people.
Is there something that, um, you were trying to avoid Attorney Donahue by not picking a number or?
Well, I mean, with, with all due respect, I, I think if there's an interest with regard to site plan approval, it's who the record title owner of the property is. Who has an ownership interest in that entity is really irrelevant. So I'm trying to accommodate at least some of the tenor of the language, but you know, whether the terrorist has a partnership with somebody really is of no interest to the board and it certainly doesn't affect a non-discretionary site plan approval.
Okay, and board members, what was our intent by this particular condition? Was it just to understand so we would be made aware of when a tenant, no, it's not even about the tenants, about the owner.
Right, because they're spec buildings and we don't know who the tenant or the user is. I actually asked the question to another town during a class and they're like, I don't think anybody builds spec buildings anymore where you don't know the tenant. And I said, oh yes, they do. So.
So is this really about the tenant more so than it's about the owner?
I think that came from a, the standard decision that we had from another warehouse property.
Okay, Attorney Dinesh, is there something you recommend if the intent of the board is really just to be notified because we're building this, this is being built to spec versus knowing anything about the business? Um, something that would be reasonable that also satisfies what the board is trying to get at?
Madam Chair, the, the language that Attorney Donahue described was, in my experience in this or addressing this kind of issue fairly typical. Both in this context and in other contexts, when there's an issue of one party looking to be informed of change of players, if you will, on the other side of a transaction or approval.
Okay, it's something like, so what Attorney Donahue suggested, is that something acceptable to the board?
I can't remember. He was just changing 50% to substantially.
The, the phrase there was substantially all, which is a fairly common term of art when one is looking to be informed about, again, identity of the party on another side of a transaction or an approval.
Okay, what about like the building 301? It looks like it can free tenants, but there's only two there now. So if they never substantially fill the whole building, then they never notify. Maybe I'm confusing it between tenants and owners.
Right, the filling of, I'll let Attorney Donahue speak.
Thanks so much, Attorney Dinesh. This, this deals with the ownership. If, if what you're trying to get to is you want a condition of approval that any, any significant tenant in the building notices provided as to who they are and a contact person to the town, we can craft something that makes sure we're not dealing with someone renting 800 square feet or something like that. I mean, if that's, that strikes me as a different condition of approval that we can figure out.
That's the next proposed condition.
Oh, sorry. There you go. This con is did my work for me.
C covers part of that. The, do, um, Attorney Donahue's edits to the satisfy what the board is trying to accomplish the intent of this in the first place.
I guess Attorney Dinesh feels substantially is the same or similar to 50% and that's fine.
Attorney Dinesh, is that how you feel about that? You didn't get a chance to speak. Is there anything else you'd add or say to that?
The phraseology that was proposed, in my view, is fairly common usage and it would be, I think sufficient to address the concerns about the ownership and title.
Okay. Um, anything else on that one? We're good. Okay, the next one we just covered of, um, this looks like this is, is this fine with, anything else for this one? Okay, we have, um, prior to construction, is this still needed with the location screening of dumpsters with it being in the plan now?
The first, the first bullet can go away.
So that's gone.
I would like to keep the second bullet.
Okay, any comments on the second bullet here? It looks like our standard, standard language. Okay. Uh, this is where mine came in. Some of the, um, comments that I had were just making sure, um, and either it's for prior construction activity or prior to the building permit. Um, there was something about a, an outstanding ConCon permit. Is that the case or no longer the case? There's, it looked like it was something that was taking the place of an earthwork permit. I just wanted a clarification on that.
Um, I suggested, uh, putting that up with letter A. So the language would be the applicant shall comply with applicable bylaws, rules, regulations and codes and obtain all necessary permits and approvals, including a land disturbance and stormwater management permit. And actually, I'm sorry, I modified it further and, uh, I think the other one was earth removal permit if required.
Okay, so it's including a land disturbance and earth removal permit if required?
Oh, and there was another, I think you wanted to add another one, which was a road opening permit from the Department of Public Works. So I can lump that in there as well.
And we can double check this language with what you have. I just want the gist of it. So the board a chance to make sure that they're okay with it, the applicant's okay with it. And then whatever language you have specifically written, that's okay. Um, I just want to make it clear to the board what we're putting in here and giving everyone the chance to speak to it. So, um, the land disturbance permit is the ConCon permit that's still required.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And so Lori, if you have things at the same time, so we don't have to double back, just feel free to include whatever you have too. So then that way we can just do this all in one shot. Okay.
I had something under a prior to construction activity.
Okay, what's your proposed condition for this?
It was a groundwater condition analysis by a technically qualified expert certifying that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater sources will not be degraded degraded to the point whereby a hazard to public health or ecological damage results.
Okay, are there comments on this one?
Just, just so there's no confusion, Madam Chair, I might, I, I think for the, from the applicant's viewpoint, it would make sense for us to listen and see where the board ends up and respond to the conditions of approval in a holistic fashion. And so, um, you know, we'll, we'll chime in if we can try to help in some fashion, particularly to expedite decision-making, but I didn't want our silence to be misinterpreted.
Okay, that's no problem. Yeah. And so really I just want to make sure, um, my concern with just, um, so many different versions is that the board really didn't have a chance to all agree on what we actually wanted to include and not include. So it was just getting, the version was getting out of control. So I just, I'm just making sure that we as a board understand the heart of what's, uh, what's being put out there. Also that the applicant understands, you know, the me, the reason behind so that, um, you have that in context. And then, uh, you know, we'll put in the actual language and then you'll have a chance to review it in full and then.
Thank you.
So that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Um, so Amy, if you're just, if you don't mind repeating that, so you wanted an expert certifying the underwater, underlying water quality.
It's a basic groundwater, um, condition. So I can just add it after if you want.
Okay.
If we're going to do it so everybody can read it.
Sure. Any, um, board comments on that one? For staff?
Hi Carrie, it's Fred.
Hi Fred.
That is a requirement of the application for a spec permit in the groundwater overlay district. And I believe that that was met when the applicant first submitted their application. There was a statement in there from their engineer who is typically referred to as the qualified expert. So I'm not sure that it's necessary to have the decision.
Okay, can you just send that out? So I don't know where it was stated anywhere that they did the analysis.
It would have been with the original application to the planning board and the groundwater advisory committee.
Okay. Okay, so I guess if you can just point it out to me after.
I'll have to do a little research and get it. I know it was submitted because we didn't require, we didn't, they would have, they would either have had to ask for a waiver or file it with the application, but I can, I can dig it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that's a TBD. Anything else from other board members? Mine was mostly about the permits that Lori covered in her suggested edits. Um, so I think that was, that's fine with me. This is our usual bullet here. Okay. Moving on to E, so hours of operation. Um, Amy, this sounded like you had comments about construction vehicles.
Yep.
Okay.
Just so they're not driving towards the high school in the residential neighborhood during construction.
Okay, other board comments on this one? Okay.
Are we, are we okay with changing the language to loaders cannot load trucks prior to seven?
Oh, you're seven instead of 7:30?
Yeah, that was, uh, what the applicants had wanted. It seemed an easy change that we could just agree to or not at this point.
I have no problem with that.
Does that mean they'll be, um, already on the site prior to seven? All the trucks will be there before seven? I know it, it sounds silly, but there are a lot of neighbors near another neighborhood. And even though they had hours of operation from like seven to seven or whatever, seven to eight, the trucks would get there like two hours early and they'd be idling and they'd be loading. And I know it says loaders cannot load trucks prior to seven. Does that mean they're all going to be showing up at the site at five and, you know? I know even the neighbors at the other site, you know, you'd have the guys there at five going, hey, make sure you get this. And then you'd get a lot of calls because the neighbors didn't want the trucks there at five o'clock in the morning prepping to load. And I know it sounds silly, but when it starts building and then we have trucks there at 5:00 AM and guys yelling across the parking lot, I'm sure the neighbors won't like that. So if it says construction project limited till seven to seven, does that mean the trucks can't get there until seven?
So Attorney Donahue, this might be your edit. Was there a reason to put in context your, what your change was? What was behind your change?
The only change I had was that, you know, I, I took this as operation. It deals with the construction, active construction could occur between seven and seven. And if active construction includes loading, then it can happen in that same window of time. I mean, the vehicles may be on site for two weeks. They may never leave the site. I mean, the vehicles may be on site for two weeks. They may never leave the site. But the condition of approval, as I read, is active construction cannot occur between, or has to occur between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. It, it's, you know, it's consistent with the bylaw. That's what your bylaw says. So I don't think the change here is necessarily a prudent decision. It's a, it's a, it's a performance standard in the industrials.
Carrie, if I could weigh in, I think that condition comes from the typical earthwork board permit condition. And it refers to no trucks can start before 7:00 AM. And when residents have concerns, we have recommended that they contact the police department to enforce that if they're starting the vehicles before seven. So whether the loader's loading at seven o'clock or after, he can't start his vehicle until seven o'clock in the morning. Is, is the way we've interpreted in the past. So.
Okay.
Okay, so board, board thoughts on that? That's seven?
I mean, I think it's pretty clear from seven A to seven P.
Okay. Okay, let's see. This is just about silence, construction-related noise. This is pretty standard for us. Any other comments on this?
What number are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on F.
Okay, just looking. Cause my number's changed, cause I had another one up on top. So the applicant shall implement measures. I had a change where it said federal and state regulatory agencies and the town of Northborough Performance Standards, but maybe that's a given. So, one that I have, after agencies, it had an addition of, and the town of Northborough Performance Standards. I don't know if Lori added that or I added that. It was from one of the original ones.
Yeah, you made that suggestion and I added it.
Okay.
And we do have a performance standard regarding noise, so.
Yeah. So since it was naming federal and state regulatory, I was just naming in the town of Northborough Performance Standards.
Board thoughts on that? At some point in this, I did add the potential for a condition to actually specify that this, this application should follow all of the performance standards. So I don't know if that'll ultimately cover, if we decide to use that, I'm just gonna note it here as a possible change for consideration. And then we can look at it at the end. Okay. This is through a construction activity. I'm on G now, maintaining a dumpster on site. The seams standard. Lori, this looks, conditions here, G and H, the same standard to what usually include. I, I think is another one from you, Lori. Is this yours as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the board on GHI?
My only question was to Lori, I asked if the neighbors would be notified when blasting occurred. And she said, just so everybody knows, she said that neighbors are notified, I think, one week in advance?
It's a fire requirement, so the blasting permit is issued by the fire department. And they mandates that all structures are checked. So then, the insurance company goes out and they do a pre-inspection of properties. I believe it's within five hundred feet of the blast zone. So they do a pre-blast survey and then they have thirty days from the close, the completion of the blasting to report any cracks. So they will absolutely be notified. Okay, that's under the fire, fire department's oversight.
Okay. Anything there then, Amy? Did you have?
Nope, I just wanted everybody to know in case anyone had the same question.
Okay, so prior to the issuance of a building permit, there are a couple of things. The water privilege fee, and I didn't, I did see at one point there was, the applicant had just wanted to make it so that these numbers had to be verified. I don't know, what made, why did we pick these numbers? Are these just an estimate at this point or?
Lori, I mean Carrie, I'm sorry. The, those numbers, I calculated those numbers. They're based on the size of the building that was submitted. The regulation through the Water and Sewer Commission spells out different levels. Depending on the size of the building, it steps up as the building gets bigger and those are based upon the size that was presented in the original site plan.
Okay, so Attorney Don here, did you have a concern with these numbers or you just wanted to make the caveat that they would need to be verified?
The latter.
Got it. Okay, submitting the results of the permeability test. Fred, is this a condition you usually put in?
It is whenever there's infiltration systems proposed. The, the design engineer makes an assumption on how quickly the soil will absorb the water. This is a chance, the permeability test is the way they verify that their assumption was correct. The reason it's required before the building permit is issued is in the event that the rate is slower than anticipated and the design needs to change, they can change it without locking themselves into the building. So discussed it with their engineer today and we're on the same page that, that can, I believe that that condition can stand as is.
Okay, let's see.
I had a question for Fred following that. I was going to add a groundwater condition that I've seen in some of the applications. Just curious if this one needed it? It was, it must confirm that the bottom of any infiltration basin is two feet above the signs of groundwater. Above any signs of groundwater. Is that, that's been in previous decisions. I was wondering if we need it here.
I, I don't believe it's necessary in this case because the basins are graded and they did do soil testing and deep pole testing to confirm the elevation of the groundwater and it's well below the bottom of the basin. So the condition's not necessary in this particular instance.
Okay. Anything else there? Moving on to Kay. Amy, did you have?
I had another one on the list. I don't know if you want me to add all my, or discuss all my conditions as we go along.
Well, just if, if there's something additional beyond this, I think we do it separately. But if you have an edit to what's on this paper, what we're looking at now, then we should do it now. So do you have any suggested edits to this or, or additions under the section or?
It's separate.
Okay.
It would be under that section, but.
Oh, okay. So why, if it's under this section about issuing a billing permit, do you wanna speak to it at this point?
Yes, and I don't know if it would be just, this, this goes back to the discussion about the site and the environmental site assessment. If it, I guess we'll have to wait to see what Mark Bartlett says. But before we had our discussion earlier, I was thinking we could add the condition from two hundred Bartlett, that the applicant shall submit the status, well, of any environmental compliance and any contamination found on site. So it was kind of a condition that would factor in depending on what Mark, Mark Bartlett comes back with. So I guess it's kind of a placeholder to see what he says.
Okay.
But it was prior to issuance of a building permit, it would be, are there any conditions needed because of the environmental site assessment review?
Okay. Any other board comments at this point? And obviously staff, feel free to jump in and applicant as well.
You could just add EPA after Sand Tech because you might think that has to do with like snow removal or something.
Got it.
Carrie, I think it's important to point out, I think it's important to point out that two hundred Bartlett Street had a known issue there. The applicant acknowledged it, that it was on their site and they didn't have the status of that remediation. And so that's why we asked for the results of a, a LSP to confirm the status of that at that time. It's not exactly the same situation here where it's not on their property.
Right. And, yeah, got it. Okay, anything else under prior to issuance of a building permit? Hold on, I'm just also toggling my own here. Okay, I had, oh, go ahead. So I think we already received this, so I, I removed it. But it seems like we, we do have an executed copy of the MWR eight M. That's correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so then no additional from there then.
One of you sent me a condition saying you wanted to add prior to construction activity, the applicant shall install the erosion control barrier to prevent the movement of material to resource areas or from leaving the site. I think that was you, Amy.
Yep. I didn't know if it fell there or fell somewhere else.
That would be handled through the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. That's a standard condition for them to install and have the location of the silt fence reviewed by the conservation agent prior to start any construction.
Okay, it used to be, it was on a lot of our previous decisions. That's why I pulled it out.
Yeah, I flagged that too. So maybe when we get to that and we can look at it closely. Because I did notice that was on a lot of our decisions. I wonder why.
Yeah, why it was then, but not now. Maybe something changed with what Conservation Commission's doing? Versus us?
I don't know exactly which decision you saw that in, but it typically is handled by conservation. But if they're putting erosion control measures around the construction activity on a site that doesn't have wetlands order of conditions on it, it would be appropriate in case they do have an order of conditions. So it's a little bit redundant, but it's a belts and suspenders kind of thing.
Okay, so, Amy, you have that under construction?
Well, Lori said it was right under where we were, right?
Yeah, that's normally when it, when it's, so the first thing that they do on the construction process is they put the erosion control barrier up. And then they're authorized to proceed with construction after that, after it's been inspected by the ConCon.
So it would go up further?
So it should be prior to the construction activity.
Okay, so we need to check. I'm just gonna put a note to check.
Like Fred said, it's belts and suspenders, so if it's there, it doesn't really matter. It's gonna be part of ConCon too.
Okay, so and what I did, part of my going through this too was I wanted to see what other decisions have been in this area for these types of projects. So I did see that on a couple of them, although I don't remember which ones. I'll also, I, I do, I am curious to see which other applications that was on.
For instance, the three hundred Bartlett Street, which was the two large buildings that ultimately became Amazon, that did not have an order of conditions because the site was outside the buffer zone. Actually, I'm sorry, it did have an order of conditions. It wasn't in groundwater.
Okay, so we'll just, we can come back to solve that. Anything? So water and sewer service is the same standard. This is the one we talked about earlier where Lori talked about the fire suppression services. The fire chief had commented on sprinklers. Sure, please.
The line item L, fire suppression services and connections, that's a building code issue in a code, building code requirement in conjunction with the fire department.
Oh, okay. So Lori, I think you drafted this one. Is there a better way we wanna state this? Building code and?
I would recommend just the building code in conjunction with the Northborough Fire Department.
Okay. Okay, does this make, does this, Lori, does this work with what you intended and board members as well, what you also would anticipate? Oops, here we are. This was something where we talked about, Amy, you had said it's typically in groundwater. It's either natural gas or electricity, but it's not oil. So we added our electricity. Any comments on this one? Okay, no toxic or hazardous chemicals? Seems pretty standard.
I was, I was gonna add something. No toxic or hazardous chemicals shall be stored within the building or on the site. There's one site I went to that had the barrels all outside of the building.
Okay.
Now, does it have to say approves same through modification or just approves through modification? Of the groundwater special permit. I don't know.
Oh, this doesn't seem like the right word in.
Yep, I don't, I don't know if we need that word.
By the word same.
It would either be the same or some other different phrase because the concept is that there needs to be a, a thing that is being approved.
Okay.
Okay, so Attorney Dineski, does the same fix that?
Yes.
Related to the prior to issuance of a sign permit?
Yeah, I got, I got a question again, Carrie. Typically with the other buildings, all signage was basically left to whatever is existent, the zoning bylaws. On top of that, this building along with the other ones were built on spec, which means we had a certificate of completion for the building, but we didn't have occupancy until we had a tenant. Are you, is, is this sign requirement in perpetuity for the property? Or is it for the first loading of signs for the first tenant?
That's what I envisioned. So what I was getting at is a review of essentially the style of signage, so not the content of the signage, more having to do with the color and the materials and the placement of the signage. And the lighting, of course.
So would that be for every sign that ever exists for the building?
No, just the first shot.
Okay, so say for example, XYZ moves in and then ABC takes over, ABC can do whatever they want without having to go back to the planning board?
I defer to the planning board.
Well, to me, I would think that the major foundations of the sign is in place and they're just changing the name. Like right now with the one that has Lowe's Pro shop. Doesn't that just slide in and out? I really don't know for sure, but there are two.
It's a whole new sign when they put those up.
They even take out the foundation and everything?
Well, the, the, if it's, if it's a, if it's a ground mountain sign, you know, typically they just switch, switch out the, you know, the signage itself. Okay, sometimes you get an occupant that wants to make, increase the size of the sign. Then they have to redo the, the location of the size of the actual foundation for it. One of my concerns is, you know, the wall signs that go on the building. You know?
I would think that the greater concern would be the freestanding sign at the roadway.
Okay. Typically freestanding signs at the roadway can go right up to the. Typically freestanding signs at the roadway can go right up to the property line and they don't have a minimum setback. The main condition is that they meet the size requirements and they do not cause a visibility hazard. Those are about the only sign requirements that we have for the industrial district. I would recommend if you're going to be tighter with the signs, I would put it in here and be a little more exact. Both in times of what, in terms of what types of signs you're going to be affecting and when those signs are affected, you know, is it for the first tenant? Is it for the second, third or fourth tenant?
Wouldn't all this be covered by the signed bylaws?
Those are in the signed bylaws and historically, all of the signage for any building done in town has been according to whatever is in the signed bylaws. This is the first time I've seen a sign mentioned in the conditions for any kind of a decision.
When I first started on the planning board years ago in 2014, the signs would all be part of the special permit, I mean, site plan review. All of a sudden it started going away though. I don't know what changed, where it stopped coming in front of the board. But we always had site plan review for the signs at the very beginning, the first couple of years I was here.
Well, I've been here six years now and I have yet to see that happen on anything that's come across my desk.
So the intent of this one, what is the intent behind this one? Just to at least?
Yeah, you know, in my experience working for other communities, we would always see the sign package as part of site plan review. So that was why I made this suggestion. So the sign was considered to be an integral part of the design of the site. And so, but certainly if you folks don't want to review the signage, then I'm happy to remove that condition.
And like, if I think way back too, if it was going to be a warehouse like this, we would get the design for the freestanding sign and then the applicant could, actually, most of them probably already had their tenants, see, they weren't spec buildings. So the, the sign always came to us and it was a discussion. It was just the past couple of years it stopped.
In my experience, it was always the first shot. So, you know, once the tenant turned over, we wouldn't see the sign again. It mostly had to do with, like I said, it wasn't the content of the sign as much as it was the materials, the lighting and the design.
So we could say prior to the issuance of the, you know, original freestanding sign.
Or just, how would we make, what's the best way to make it clear? It's just a first shot is? If the board agrees, is it just a first shot where we want to see the sign? Number one, is that, do we all agree on that?
Unless there was a major, like, like how we have minor and major. It comes back to us if it's a major change, but if it's minor change.
Right, so maybe that, so Attorney Dineski, if there's a, something, one of the conditions, I think, further down is about if there's a substantial change to the plan. So would we be covered if all of a sudden somebody wants a sign that's just beyond what was ever approved? Or would we need to specify in a different condition?
Ma'am Chair, I would recommend that we just have language that links that substantial change hook or trigger to the sign as well. And in this particular paragraph, perhaps the wording would be initial sign permit or permits. I think that's conceptually the way to go and maybe the precise language we could craft based on the elements under the sign bylaw provisions that would afford permits and what we would anticipate as those kinds of signs that would be included here. But short answer, I think that introducing that substantial change concept would make it clearer as to what the board's intention is.
Introduce a substantial change here or in a later?
To, to have language that links that substantial or that, for that substantial change requirement to encompass the sign permits.
Okay.
Just essentially being a cross-reference.
Got it. Okay, does that sound, what, does that answer sort of what Laurie was getting at? And then I guess what the board would prefer to see? Any comments on this one?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
But the new language, just so that I can make sure I get it right, is prior to issuance of the first sign permit for the freestanding sign or a substantial change, then the location dimensions, it goes on from there. So we were saying?
No, I thought we were just doing prior to the issuance of an initial sign permit. And then later we have a condition, like if there's a substantial change, it needs to come back. It sounded like Attorney Dineski was saying, just to cross-reference the sign to what a substantial change is including, et cetera. No, you don't like that, Laurie?
No, I'm just concerned that, so we have the substantial change condition, which is, oh goodness. Not sure which version, but it's the last condition. And I, it says that that is going to trigger the public hearing process. And I don't think a change to the freestanding sign is something that you would want to trigger a public hearing for. But I mean, that's just me. Maybe you folks would want a public hearing on that.
I do not prefer that. Do any board members prefer a public hearing over the signs or?
If I may, there, there are a couple of ways to do it and we could certainly do it as Laurie has suggested and confine that topic to this paragraph. We would have to do a little more wordsmithing to that other substantial change paragraph. And so it may be easier to just keep it here.
Yep. Okay, so Laurie, it sounds like you have the start of that and we can just wordsmith that. Does that sound, is that agreeable? Any board comments on this?
Sure, it sounds good. So they'll work on it, it's fine.
Yeah, just to tie in the substantial change language. Okay, regulatory and warning signs, anything here? This looks pretty standard. The turning rate, anything here? Okay, so this is prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. For me? Okay, we have installed signage at the driveway. A record of the conservation restriction, impervious cover calc. O and M inspection report and the as-built plan. Anything, any comments on this section here?
Is there anything that we can add to the signage for truck idling or no truck idling on site?
So I'm thinking, and I don't know how the board feels, that, that no truck idling would be a condition separate. Oh, but you want a sign included. If that were a condition, if a condition were accepted, no trucks idling, there would also be a sign that covers that.
Yeah.
Gary, if I may, I believe there's a state law that restricts diesel idling according to state law. I think it's 15 minutes, but I'm not sure. Might be worth somebody researching that and, you know, if you're going to put up a sign, wing idling, make it consistent with the state regulations.
Sure. Oh, yes, I've seen that at the airport where they have the commuter lot. There's a sign out there that says you can only idle for like, like you said, like 15 minutes. That's a good idea, Millie.
The, the other thing I just want to bring up real quick is, is with the other buildings, okay, when the structure was up and it was finished, but not occupied with a tenant, those buildings did not get an occupancy permit. They got a certificate of completion. They don't get an occupancy permit until a tenant applies, does their build out and moves in. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure you have the distinction there that, you know, this building, when it goes up, because it's going to be built on spec, you don't have a tenant yet. If it's complete and there's no tenant, it does not have an occupancy permit. It has a certificate of completion for the building in the project that you approved. Okay, when somebody comes to us and wants to be a tenant in the building, it's one, two or three or whatever. Okay, that's when the idea of an occupancy permit takes shape.
Okay, so are you recommending a change based on that?
Yeah, it's just going to take some wordsmithing. I'm not quite sure how to put it. But like, but like Amy's experiences have showed that, you know, a lot of people do buildings on spec and then the tenant comes in later. So, you know, when the bill, when it's just a box and it's complete, it's a completed box. It's not, it's not an occupancy. So I would say probably prior to the issuance of a building certificate of completion.
So you're suggesting up here?
Yeah.
So Laurie, you usually write decisions based on occupancy permit. Is that correct?
Yes, I can modify that language.
Okay. All right. I did have something here that we had put into other decisions and I'm just going to try to copy and paste it if I can. So instead of just a completed report here, we've used, I'm going to put it in red. This is a condition. I don't know, Fred, if this is something you usually put in, but this just seemed like a real abbreviated version of it. So I didn't know if this was more standard in our typical decisions. Is this not necessary? Does it better outline what you would anticipate? Or I'd be curious to know your thoughts on that.
I'm trying to determine that. The, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan comes to me and it's in the package of the approval. What we're looking for is to have a copy, to have them fill out one of their annual reports at the time that they're ready to occupy the building to make sure that it's clean and ready to go and that the applicant or whoever the owner of the property, the occupant of the property knows their responsibility in that operation and maintenance plan. Because what would happen in the past is the, whoever occupies the building is not familiar with that and doesn't know where to go. So if the engineer who does the original plan presents them with a blank, she shows them how to fill it out, then at least they know how to go forward. So it's, it's important to have it in there for the future tenants of the building, whether they own it or not, if they're responsible for that.
So does something like this just not belong under this section or is it just not needed, period?
Carrie, I actually put it in letter V.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I did. I put a portion of that language in letter V. So this is just what is required for them to submit prior to receiving that building certificate of completion. But then there's the other letter V, which says that they have to maintain the site in accordance with the operation and maintenance report. And then the town engineer shall be provided with copies of the contract and invoices for all work and inspections performed. And then we have discussed the, the new language. Earlier this evening, the STAND Act had recommended, which I thought I would throw in that condition, having to do with the promptly versus immediately.
Okay.
And then I think it was one of you, I can't remember who, had asked me to incorporate language having to do with the sediment that is picked up from the site should be disposed of in accordance with federal and state requirements. So I added that in as well.
Okay, so I'm going to retract what I suggested because it sounds like it's not covered. Unless there are any board comments on that, that seems adequate to me. Any other thoughts on that?
No, but a quick question. Since Millie has to leave at 9:30, do we have to get through those warrant articles before she leaves or no? Do they have to be voted on tonight or can they be voted on next meeting?
Laurie, do you know that?
The warrant, Bob, do you have exactly the date when the warrant closes? I know usually we can submit after that date because we've already submitted the initial draft. So if there are corrections, we could submit them after. But if you happen to know.
Hang on, I may have something here. I don't have a date for the closing of the warrant.
I believe the closing of the warrant happens at the March 13th meeting. I think they, they read the warrant one meeting and then they close the warrant the next. I think it's February 27th where they're going to review the articles and then open the warrant. I think it's March 30, 13th is the first meeting in March.
So our next meeting is March 7th, so we could shift it to that meeting if you'd like.
Okay, I mean, ideally we could crank through this so that we have a document to work on, just deal with. So if we can do that on March 7th, I think that'd be great. How do we confirm that though? Well, is that, well, I guess the Board of Selectmen always meet on, is it the second Monday in March, the second or fourth?
Second and the fourth.
Okay, so then that would be the case. So Millie, is that okay with you if we keep going with this?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, board members, you're okay with that? Keep going with this?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, Amy, did you have a question here? Oh, that was your question. It wasn't related to the? Did we lose anything?
No, I'm right here.
Okay. This, nothing else under occupancy permit or building certificate of completion, however Laurie modifies that? Okay, next we have a condition of a post occupancy transportation monitoring program.
I had a little change to it. I was wondering how we could set it up so it's reevaluated. If the site sells to a new end user, like say the first three years, it's Amy's Antiques and I have one truck, but three years later I sell it to Amazon. You'd want the traffic study done for the applicant that had the high-end traffic versus like Amy's Antiques with one truck. I didn't know how to, I might have written that in a different way, I don't know, in my other paperwork. But that was my thought. How could you trigger this in the future if you get a really in-traffic app use?
Okay, so I had some thoughts of this one as well. Did any other board members have comments on this one? Because what I'm wondering is I, we could get stuck on this. So I'm wondering if we pull this out and then look at some of the different ways we did and then sort of talk through what our purpose is, why it's here, all of that is a kind of a separate conversation. But did any other board member have other ways to say this or not agree with it or any comments in general?
Well, I think it should be in there in some manner. I just, yeah, like I wouldn't know how to word it though.
I think it needs to be re-wordsmithed a little bit.
Okay, so this is something where it sounds Okay, so this is something where it sounds like the heart of it is what we're interested in the heart of this, but we're not sure this is the right language. It sounds like a couple of us have different language for this. So I'm gonna just move it out to the end. And, and come back to it. Otherwise I know we'll get stuck on that and I just want to make sure we at least got through everything we need to for tonight. Is that okay with the board?
Yes. Sounds good.
Okay, um, so this is about landscaping, just making sure. Um, usually we put something about in perpetuity. I don't know if that's in there as well in addition to this one.
I think it was that further.
Yep, in perpetuity. Okay, so.
I, I did actually. Want to modify that condition. So what I was thinking is to add additional language that says to the maximum extent feasible, no mature trees shall be disturbed or removed beyond the silks, except where the planning director, when consultation with the tree warden, determines that they are dead or dying. And it doesn't have to be me, it could be the town engineer, just somebody. Or the conservation agent. Where the planning director determines that existing vegetation is inadequate. You screen the development from abutting residentially occupied properties. A six-foot stockade fence and/or coniferous trees shall be installed. The planning director shall approve the type of screening in advance of installation, including the species number and size of plantings.
Okay, um, board comments on that one?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, so that's just something that kicks off, like, how will you even know to do that Lori? Do you, is it something like you, it's triggered and you go over to the site and look or it just says within a year of installation, so?
Yeah, so what would happen, uh, first of all, is that during the construction process, if they find that there are trees that they want to take down that are outside of that limit of disturbance, then they, it would be their responsibility to contact me before they do that and flag that tree. And then the tree warden and I would go down and we would look at it and of course, Scott would tell, tell me whether he agreed that it needed to come down or not. So, uh, before they get their occupancy permit, or I guess in this case, it would be the certificate of completion. Uh, we typically do a site walk. And so at that time, uh, we'd be looking at the vegetation and determining whether the screen is adequate or not. So. If it's not adequate, then they wouldn't get the sign off on the certificate of completion. Uh, they would have to take, address that concern at that time.
Okay.
Carrie. I just wanted to ask Lori if that. I thought she mentioned in the beginning of that, that the, we were talking about trees beyond the erosion control measure?
So we are talking about trees beyond the erosion control measure. Um, but also. The analysis of the screen will take place. That's part of that condition too. So the analysis of the screen, so the plantings would take place within the limit of disturbance. So they won't be outside of the limit of disturbance. So additional plantings are in the disturbed area.
Okay, so the. There are two separate things. The, the erosion control measure is the limit of work. So they're not allowed to go beyond that limit of work without notifying the Conservation Commission that there's a reason to exceed that. And then the commission decides if they're gonna have to amend the order or give them permission. And they do have a tree policy if there is a dead or dying tree that is jeopardizing health or safety of the building or something, something else that requires it to take down, they can work with the commission. So you might want to separate that discussion from one side of the silt fence to the other. So the front of the silt fence, I fully expect that the screening needs to be maintained and intact. And if there's something that's dying and the tree warden wants to say it's dying, that we could work with them to replace that. But anything beyond the erosion control really should be left to the Conservation Commission because that's their limit of work and they don't allow anything beyond that.
Do you have to do a, an inspection later on that confirms whether it was or wasn't done?
What happens when they get their order of conditions, it's good for three years and they can have it extended. Um, once around the time that the ASBIL plan is done, they usually would request a certificate of compliance from the Conservation Commission because the order of condition is recorded against the deed to the property and it, it act like a lien, although it has no monetary value as far as the town's concerned. But they need to get that certificate of compliance in order to free up their title. And at that time, there's an inspection done, the ASBIL plan is reviewed for all the conservation related issues. So it's, it's important that we, we not encourage them to do any work beyond the erosion control barrier. During construction.
But I'm talking about areas that are outside of the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. So this is not necessarily, I'm talking about like all trees throughout the site that are beyond the, the erosion control measures, whether or not they're jurisdiction, they're under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission or not.
Okay, uh, I guess we could talk about in-house with the Conservation tomorrow to make sure we're of the same mind because the, the erosion control measures is the limit of work around the entire property and they're, they're not able to go beyond that without modifying the plan, so.
I could add the conservation agent to the group. So it would be me, the tree warden and the conservation agent with that.
That's fine. I think that, I think that we can talk about it in-house tomorrow and come up with some language that accomplishes what you want without taking something away from the commission.
Sounds good. So any board, board members like this condition in general? So, all right, so it sounds like Fred and Lori, you're gonna work out that proper language. Um, okay, anything here? We have, um, review the public lighting and. Anything additional here? Okay, this is the one we talked about earlier about this language that I retracted because it's already in here. Lori, you mentioned you're adding the STANTEC language, included promptly, but within, but no longer, no, no longer than thirty days or whatever that language was. Any others? Well, we're talking about STANTEC condition. Are there any other STANTEC conditions to add? It was all included as the plan, so there was no conditions. Got it. Okay, perfect.
Okay. I just had in my note, you know, implement all of your conditions, but I didn't, I don't know what they all are.
Okay, so as far as we know, that was the one that we needed to insert. The snow storage, I'm sorry, the. Let's see, snow storage areas condition. Have these changed though? No, this is the new one, December twenty second, twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay.
And the snow piles, uh, four feet in height, that's from the O and M plan.
Okay, got it. Um, and this is all in the plan too, excess snow, just, you know, where it'll be or it'll be disposed offsite. That's all in the plan as well from what I recall, so, okay.
Yes.
So did you say that date has to be updated? Didn't he make changes to it?
No, the snow storage plan, um, I believe the, the final date is December twenty-second.
Okay.
Well, although we did just receive that big plan today, so I.
I'm just gonna put a note, double check the date.
Yeah.
Okay, the heart of it remains though, the board agrees with this one?
Yeah, and I think the one above we have to date too.
Actually, I'm saying that it is part of the modified package, so I'll add that new date.
Okay. Okay, we have a couple of short ones here. X through A. Outdoor storage. Trailer connects. Uh, vehicle maintenance, washing and the sodium de- de-icing agents. I think, I just want to check my document. I think I have. Um, I had. I had a couple of small things here and I don't know if. Any, do any board members have any changes here? I just had no refueling or vehicle maintenance. And then I had, um, no disconnects or delivery. Then I, I'm gonna retract that because I think I have something else that I, I want to propose later, so I'm gonna retract that, but I do have no refueling or vehicle maintenance. I, I think that came from other decisions that we've had. I don't know if any board members have comments on that or?
I agree with that one.
Okay, any others for this area?
Yeah, I had something added to the one with, um, the. Let's see, my numbers are different. That's why I'm looking it up. Number X or little, letter X. After trailer bags, I kind of, I put a semicolon and wrote, "The loading dock shall be kept clear of visible trash or discarded shipping materials." But maybe that was in another one.
No, I, I have that.
In a different one?
Uh, you made that comment.
Okay, to X?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so this is, this has some.
Um, I just had a semicolon. "The loading dock shall be kept clear of visible trash or discarded shipping materials."
Okay, comments on this one?
And underneath that one, I added a condition, but maybe we shouldn't do that now. But it had to do with the top where you had talked about compactors and dumpsters. I had dumpsters and/or compactors shall be located in the truck dock area and screened.
They took care of that. The plan modification we received today, so.
Okay. So it's in the plan modification?
It is. They're showing a compactor, um, in the loading dock area.
Okay. And where we have, "There shall be no trailer connects or disconnects." I added idling trucks on the site between, and I changed it. The hours, I thought ten PM to six AM was too, I thought ten PM was too late.
Okay, so here. Okay, so here we have a question of time to be just further thought through. Um, and then so what I just want to avoid is like going back and forth on like, is it a nine, is it a date? So I'm just, I want to flag it because it's important, but I just want to also, um, get through as much as we can. So we have a question of time here, idling trucks.
Yeah, I changed the wording of the washing. I wrote. "The washing of vehicles, comma, including tractor cabs and/or trailers, comma, on the property is prohibited." So it's all vehicles, not just tractor cabs or trailers, like there could be vans, you know?
Is it commercial vehicles that you're thinking or?
Yeah, well, um, the employees probably won't be washing their cars, but you could add commercial vehicles or we could have all vehicles and they're not having a car wash. Not meaning to be funny, but.
Okay. I'm sorry, we can, I'll just, I'll just put commercial for now.
Yep.
Okay, anything else through here? Okay, this one's pretty standard, uh, just maintaining in perpetuity. And then we have, um, this is the one that we looked at before with material change or substantial modification. So Lori, is this one, I know we've done one of these before. Is this one that we had, this is a language reviews in the past or?
I think I, yeah, I, um. It, it's a slight variation on some of the standard language I've used in other applications. And the reason why I beefed it up is because this most likely will be a spec project. And so I know that there was an interest in having, um, them potentially come back if the impacts or use is gonna be significantly different, uh, like the traffic volume resulting from the project is gonna be significantly different than what they did their traffic, what they used for their traffic impact assessment. So that's why it looks the way it is. It's a beefed up version of a standard condition.
Does this also cover the issue we talked about with subdivision? It sounds like if we're moving forward with this plan, it wouldn't necessarily would mess up everything else to then do the subdivision. So this also cover like if for some reason we forge ahead additionally with a subdivision, it would cover that as well?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Attorney Zeski, you reviewed this and yeah, I know you've helped us with this language in the past. So this is something that seems appropriate as well to, and when you read it.
The Madam Chair, the item AD that we're reviewing now, that concept?
CD, yes.
Yes, and I think as, as was stated, this. Is based on prior language. I would probably want to review all, as well, a, uh, prior decision, but conceptually, I think what is being captured is that the board is being asked to approve a site plan based on certain consultations, studies, analysis, et cetera. And if those are substantially changed, then the considerations for review are obviously impacted.
Okay, so we're at the end of what we had for this portion. Lori, did you have additional conditions from your side that you wanted to add to this?
It's funny, I just quickly go through and see from my other documents. If I'm forgetting something, um, there was a a change that I think Amy, you forwarded to me about, uh, "The roof of the proposed building shall be painted white and built to support solar panels."
Yeah, I had read something that a white roof helps reflect the sun. So put solar panels, even though I want the building to be brown. Not brown, but beige or light gray. I don't know if it matters if it's a light gray building, the roof could also be light gray.
The, um, if I make the color of the roof. Is under the building code and under the energy code. Because the color of the roof has a direct effect on the temperature on the inside of the building and the HVAC loading inside of the building. So, um, to determine, the board to determine the color of a roof goes against the building energy codes.
What color is it?
Typically they're white, okay, because they want to avoid excess AC, um, in the summertime. Uh, typically they do get enough with a white roof in the wintertime for enough radiational heat. Um, in addition to that, uh, we have a new energy code for commercial structures coming up on July first. And it's gonna hurt. Um, you're gonna be looking at, um, possibly, well, the roofs have to be uh, designed for a certain amount of natural flow through. They also have to be, um, set up so that you can have a certain amount of solar panels on it, ready to go. Uh, and all of that is, if it's not here already, it'll be here on July first.
Okay.
It'll get what you're looking for. It just has to come with building code and the energy code, not through.
Conditions.
A condition on the, on the, on the decision. So.
Now, will this building have to fall under those codes, or is it, oh yeah, because they haven't gone for a permit, they'd have to apply for a permit before July 1st?
Right. Right, I mean, the, the white building, the white roof and stuff is actually literally in place as we speak. Some of the additional stuff on July 1st, you know, is going to add. So there is a whole bunch of energy requirements to go into a building of this size to start with. And it's too numerous to go over tonight. It's a whole separate chapter of the book. So it will be an energy efficient building, not necessarily a lead building. But it will have to comply to all the energy requirements. And if they apply for the permit for the building after July 1st, there's more energy requirements that they have to deal with.
Okay.
So Amy and Carrie, you had submitted more changes to me that we haven't discussed, so are you okay with leaving those aside, or?
Yeah, so I pulled, so I went through and pulled out what I'm proposing for conditions that I just wanted to see, get a temperature read on the board sentiment on it before we went forward with, you know, trying to negotiate what that would look like in a final condition. So I, I'm hoping we can use this time, and that we have 20 minutes to at least cover, maybe get board consensus on the heart of some of these conditions, and not worry too much about the language, but just get consensus on what we're trying to get at in some of these conditions. So I don't know if that makes sense to, because then it'll give us a chance to then work with it and go back and forth. I just want the board to at least say, yes, that's, that's what we want, or no, that's not what we want. Does that make sense for the board?
It does make sense, yep.
Okay. So I had just previously mentioned that if there's, you know, in thinking about the criteria of a site plan, what are the conditions that would, so if we feel like this plan does not meet our current criteria, what were conditions of approval that would help it, help this plan to meet our criteria? So I think I had added possible conditions, which we talked about before, and we may not need. It was for criteria, the first criteria item. I had the erosion control measures to be installed. That's something we can decide, maybe that's not needed. Fred, we talked about that earlier, so we don't have to solve that here. For the second item under the criteria. I'm going to hold this one because to Amy's point earlier, we haven't heard back additional information, like if Mark Barrett looks at it, this was really about what to do about the VOCs. So I have some proposed conditions there, but I don't think it makes sense to go down a road on this one if there's a different body that's supposed to review in the first place, so I'm not going to bother to bring that up now. I think the board needs more information for that one. Where I start to really propose some additional conditions is getting to criteria item number three, which is improving pedestrian, bicycle, or vehicle, vehicular safety. I don't want to take up all the time on mine. Amy, do you have anything that would pertain of criteria for one or two that you want to address before I go down into three?
Well, for one, I want to hear from Dave Robinson. They talked about the parking. My my one was to make sure we maintain those trees in the front and possibly push the parking back. But at this meeting, he said they were looking into that.
Okay.
So I guess that would be put off. And for two, I have some things. I just have to make sure we didn't touch on them already. I'm just looking quickly.
Okay, so while Amy's looking for that, board members. It sounds like the applicant is coming, was thinking through that first initial thing that Amy just brought up, is that's something the board is interested in, and it sounds like we were when we first talked about it, hearing about those, looking at that parking, that when we first talked about those trees when we first opened the hearing, so that seems like something we were all interested in as a board.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess.
And for number two, I just went down and we hit all of my number twos with the with the criteria that was already in the decision, all the groundwater ones.
Great. Okay. Um. So I had, I had some items for the criteria three. Mine are mostly. For me, when we talked at the hearing, I was concerned, I brought up the safety audit that had transpired and just I brought forward some of those, that, some, the, the stats on increase in crashes there since 2020, especially since Amazon came in. There's been a great deal of discussion since we last talked through what this area looks like. So I felt pretty strongly that we should have a condition about prohibiting traffic. I think the board's talked about that before from turning on Bartlett Street towards the neighborhoods. So beyond signage, I, I would like to see that prohibited. I also wanted to put in something, some sort of trigger, that where we don't know who the tenant is at this time, and in all of the reports that were submitted, the traffic report, it was really for a warehouse specifically. And when we brought up the point of, well, what about if it's a high cube or parcel distribution or last mile? We were assured that this was a, the traffic study was related to a warehouse. So I would want to design some sort of trigger where if, actually not a traditional warehouse, and it's something with a higher intensity, that we would want the board to evaluate, reevaluate project impacts. So it's along the lines of, in the event the project impacts are greater than what's characterized in the applicant, application submittals, then there needs to be some sort of trigger to come back to this board. So I'll stop there to get a temperature check on the board in terms of the heart of those types of conditions.
I, I think that's a fair statement as far as not knowing what the impact is going to be. And reassessing that within, you know, a year after occupancy, and then maybe again after three years. Or if we find that there's a significant change, like multiple crashes related specifically to tractor trailers or truck traffic, I think that might warrant a reevaluation.
Bill, did you have something there?
Yeah, my only concern here is that that, that, that sounds good, but what are we going to do if it's found that there are more crashes? We can't hold them responsible, we can't shut down their company. So, so really, what's the enforcement? Right, even if, even if it comes back, you know, three times worse than what the traffic study said. Okay, so what do we do?
Well.
Right, there's no enforcement of that.
But we do have in some of our options to put in either a light or to begin to you know, control some of that.
Did you have something in mind with this, Carrie, in terms of, would you mitigate a problem?
Well, so that brings back, I guess, the other condition that we looked at, which was the traffic monitoring. So I did, I pulled that out originally to come back to it, but we had in there something about a traffic monitoring type of program. So I don't I put some, some draft language of what that could look like, but I'm not tied to any specific. And this is something that I'll, of course, share with the board and the applicant as well. You know, do we set thresholds, or do we look at, you know, initial occupancy, and then again at X percentage or higher occupancy? And then I think the original condition we had suggested, if there's some sort of issue there, then there's a component of mitigation, some sort of mitigation associated with the impacts. So I think that's something we'd have to sort out more carefully. I know, Laurie, in your experience, what is the right type of condition in that, when you don't know who the tenant is, and you just want to protect yourselves from, you know, the sky's the limit situation, what can, what's the best thing the board could do?
So in my experience, there's always a cutoff time. So depending upon the size of the project, it might be you know, at 50% occupancy, and then again at 100% occupancy, and then you check the next years, but there's always a deadline. So it would be you know, three years or five years, or whatever the case. I've never seen it where it goes on indefinitely. Or, you know, 20 years from now, there's a, a new tenant, that might be different in character than the tenant that would occupy the space a year after occupancy. I don't really see how we would, first of all, even remember that the condition exists 20 years down the line. And secondly, that that would be something that would be enforceable that far in the future.
So then back to Bill's point about enforceability, and then what? What is our then what abilities, or what have you seen in your experience?
Well, then, then, I mean, the traffic could be caused by, you know, a different occupant that we can't even envision today. So, you know, we may I think then what is just kind of, the responsibility expires at that point, and it's no longer on the applicant. It would be like any other intersection in the town. It would be either under the jurisdiction of the town or NASTO, depending upon what intersection we're talking about. So like, for example, you know, the Lyman Street intersection, there's a lot of truck traffic that currently exists that goes through that intersection. So we can't really, I mean, I suppose the town could go to Amazon and ask them to pay to upgrade the traffic signal, but chances are they won't. So is it really fair to assign the responsibility to this much smaller enterprise when they're only contributing a much, much smaller percentage of truck traffic to that intersection?
Yeah, I think for me, the heart of it would just be, since we don't know the tenant, you know, and we're assured that it's a warehouse, but then it turns into, the tenant turns out to be completely different from what we anticipated. What is that condition that just protects us from, you know, if, if you, so you did traffic counts based on a straight warehouse use, but say we end up with a last mile distribution facility, which maybe we argue back and forth, is that really a warehouse, but let's say it is, how do, that traffic count's very different in the standards there than just a plain warehouse. So I would just want to be able to say, okay, if it's not a plain warehouse, if it's a last mile facility, or whatever that, you know, high cube version is, what's the trigger that enables us to say, wait a minute, this impact is different than what was portrayed to us?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I had suggested the language as it is. So it would be 25% above the estimated peak hour traffic volumes that were put into the traffic study. So I was trying to come up with something that would be reasonable.
Okay, so how does the board feel about that original language, just as a concept? Forget the numbers or exact numbers, but as a concept, is that something the board feels is a good condition for this project?
Well, how is it determined that there has been X amount of percentage increase in traffic?
They would have to do a, a follow-up traffic study.
So would that be on like a calendar basis, you know, scheduled, or, and for how long?
Yeah, so what I had suggested here is that it would begin one year after achieving full occupancy and terminating three years after full occupancy. If you're concerned that it may not be fully occupied, you know, forever, then, you know, certainly we can change the language, so we could say commencing six months after initial occupancy.
And who's monitoring whether it's fully occupied or not? And how do we do that?
I would think that would be Bob.
Yeah.
And the other way to do it maybe is on the of a tenant, either addition or change of a tenant, it has, you know, they have to do a traffic study over the next year to determine the impact of that tenant.
We just run into the problem of like, what about if that's in 20 years from now? Like, what's our endpoint of that? What's our reasonable endpoint?
And maybe it's, you know, to a maximum of five years, or, or, you know, something along that line. But that way, if, you know, if they have one tenant come in, and then they have another one come in six months later, you know, we should, we want to be able to judge that, that difference.
Fred, you got something there?
I, I do. I have a question, and it may be just too simple. I might be missing the point here, but where, what point, where do you expect the traffic that you want to monitor? At what location? Do traffic council put counters out at a specific, actions can determine things about that group? So are we talking about the driveway onto Bartlett Street?
That was my suggestion. So that way you can pinpoint the traffic.
Associated with this project.
Exactly.
So my question then is, if we are successful and coming up a condition that sends all traffic to the east, are we still concerned about that traffic increase? If none of it's going towards the west or the residential area, what's the concern if the traffic volume is 5% or 10%, or even 25% more than what they anticipated?
Well, we seem to, even in our current state, have a problem with enforcing that direction, so it would be important to know if we have a problem where they're not even turning that way, and we have some sort of increase in crashes on the street, or any sort of impacts from the project, I think it would be important to know that. I, I don't anticipate that 100% of the traffic will actually turn that way. I mean, our current properties don't do that.
Right, well, what we're hoping for is some kind of condition that requires that, whether it's physical or not, and that we can, we can get there. If that's the case, then all of that concern kind of goes away. If we can get something physically designed so that all the traffic enters and exits from the east. Other than that, the traffic accidents that you're concerned about would have to happen right at the driveway, the end of the driveway onto Bartlett Street. Seems likely that there would be that many, because they're going to have to stop to, to go out there. So I guess I wanted to make sure that I was understanding it clearly, because we can't, once we go out onto Bartlett Street and start counting traffic, we don't know who to attribute those trucks to.
I know we only have a couple of minutes here. Amy, do you have other items under three? We can at least get through this.
I do. And I wonder if Millie minds if we continue on and have a list, and then we can send it out to the whole board. So that way, next meeting, Millie could read it before the meeting, and then she could bring any additional comments she has. And I can.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but then she won't be able to vote, right?
Okay, yeah, we don't want to do that.
I believe you did accept, actually, no, you did not. The Mullen rule, so, and, and it's also, since we've, we've covered a lot of ground, even if you had that, this might not be the best place to.
No.
Lay on to invoke it.
I do think what's important is making sure we prohibit commercial vehicles from turning right. And make sure that all the commercial vehicles exit and enter from the east, whether, like Fred said, whether it's, you know, physical or with just the condition to prohibit it.
Okay, did you have other stuff under this section, so we can at least wrap up this part, or if it's too long, that's okay?
Well, I wrote incorporate chief libors comments. I liked all those comments. Because one of my. Because one of my um my ideas too was to talk about like what Millie said about clearing a walking path on the other side of the aqueduct, so there's a safe place for people to continue walking. Um it had to do with the yield crossing sign on the aqueduct access. So it warns both pedestrians and vehicles that there is a possible danger crossing the trail. And that was it, the trail and the crossing sign.
Do any board members opposed to furthering down that road for whatever the wordsmithing looks like? But the intent of those are on track with what we'd be thinking for specifically how it fits with criteria three?
I think that's fine.
Okay, all right, so Millie, I know you have to depart.
I only have one thing for four, I can add really fast. I said, um, the twenty-four foot wide accessway around the back of the building shall be kept clear of snow and outside storage materials at all times, just to keep it safe around the back of the building.
And I just, the fire chief shall approve final location of fire hydrants prior to issuance of the building permit. Was that already in there?
Uh, yeah, I had added that to the one where we were talking about fire suppression. I had included hydrant locations.
Perfect, I retract. Okay, Millie, it's nine thirty.
Okay, all right, so I made it through four, that's great.
Oh, does Millie need to be part of the motion to continue? Okay.
Uh if if you, if I might, before you take a motion to continue and and I respect other people's time, but, you know, i- in the ordinary course, and and in fact, previously in the ordinary course business in Northboro, there would be active work on trying to come to the appropriate language between meetings. Um and I would hope that this board would authorize the planner to engage in those activities. I'll leave it to Mr. Dinesky uh to advise you as to what role that can have with the board. But to make some progress, I mean, this is, this is something that, this is, this is not the best way to get it done. Um, we want to get a set of conditions that work. We don't want to end up back in front of the judge arguing about you impose unreasonable conditions. But I think we can only do that by having some meaningful work to share ideas to try to reach a consensus.
I totally agree, so I think that proposal is the next step. What what we've gone through is a great deal, a great bulk of it. So in the meantime, between this time and the next time, just wordsmithing what those things look like, giving the applicant a chance to go through and, you know, whatever comments or concerns that you have. So we'll at least get through probably seventy-five, eighty percent where we need to be for the next time. So does that sound reasonable to everybody from this point?
Right, and as far as I know, like, we could never work on conditions in between meetings outside of the public hearing. I didn't know if that was what he was mentioning that we should do.
No, but I think for the ones we looked at tonight.
Your plan certainly can.
Yeah, but I think in the last case, there was no board review at all. We hadn't even talked about conditions. So I think now that the board has a chance to look at the conditions, we're at a point where we have consensus that this is a direction. We can work through everything we have through tonight. And then I think, I don't, I I have a couple more and I don't know who else does, but I think we're at the tail end anyway. So does that make sense for everybody?
Uh huh, it does.
Okay. Okay, um, uh, do we, with March seventh at six P M, does that make sense?
Uh, we do already have some public hearings, so if you recall, we have um the school. Yeah, so they're at six P M.
Okay, so can we do six oh five?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to continue to six oh five on March seventh? Is that the right date before I put that up there? Yeah, okay.
So moved.
Second.
I can.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye.
Do we need a letter from the applicant to that we're continuing? Remember how there was something before, was that subdivisions where we needed a letter?
No, we're all set.
We're all set.
Ninety days from the close of the public hearing, so we're still in public hearings, so we're good.
Okay, okay, great, thanks so much for all the work on that. So Millie, um, you are departing, but we're gonna continue with um some just old business of the board. If you don't mind us for going through minutes or things like that. Um, do you want, should we just get ourselves all the way up until the possible vote on the? Well, we're only a couple away, so how do we want to handle the bylaws? Because we have that as, we have a couple left. You will just wait till next time to handle that?
Aye.
Bye, Millie. Which ones do we have left?
Well, so we have the continued here, we'd have to continue the um bylaws hearing. Either we're gonna open the, but we're gonna continue, we have to, we continue to tonight. So tonight we have to, we have to actually just open and close now, because Millie won't be able to participate in the vote. She misses part of the conversation.
You're right, yep.
Okay, so we'll have to make a motion to continue the bylaws to March seventh at six ten.
So moved.
Should we put that first, Lori?
Yeah, uh, actually, we do have another public hearing, I'm recalling, uh, four fifty-five Whitney Street. It's an addition, about four thousand five hundred square feet, so that'll be a busy night.
Okay, so what time is that one?
I believe that one's at uh six oh five, so we got two, two items at six oh five. And then we have uh the school at six o'clock.
Can we literally open and close that, I'm sorry, continue that hearing and just make it known to the applicant that it's just, we're not gonna be able to get, do the justice of a full review and just op- open hearing as advertised and continue it?
I'm sure they won't be happy, but.
Well, it's better than sitting there all night, really.
Because we have to get through the bylaws and the high school one before town meeting.
Okay. So should we put the bylaws at uh six fifteen then or six? We could probably just put all of the items together at six o'clock.
Yep.
If you'd like, and then you can uh bounce around them.
Okay, so um then we need a motion to continue the hearing on the um zoning amendments to March seventh at six P M. Second, all in favor, Amy? Bill?
Aye.
Anthony? Carrie's an aye. Um, so just to do old business then, um, Attorney Dinesky, you don't have to stick around, you're welcome to. But if you had enough fun for one night, you don't have to stay.
If you're all set, very good, thank you, everyone.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Um, okay, I just want to at least kick out the minutes. Um, and I don't think Millie would mind. We have minutes from October eighteenth that we had revisions pending. Um, everybody clear on the version of those minutes and, okay. Um, then is there a motion to approve minutes from October eighteenth as amended?
So moved.
Second.
I can.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Um, Lori distributed revised minutes, I think, yesterday for January third, is that right? Yesterday, I think. Okay, um, did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from January third?
I did not.
Okay.
I think I did it, those were from before though, right? We already had.
Yeah.
Yes, I I incorporated yours, yours are highlighted in yellow. And then Carrie made a uh very small change, which appears in red.
Um, yeah, mine was just because I said it would report to me on something, it was actually the planning board, so I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want in the future people reporting something to me. Um, okay, but Anthony, you didn't have it just read, do you want to table the January third minutes or did everyone else read them?
I read them.
Billy, you said?
I'm sad.
Bill, um, Anthony, do you want us to wait for you to have a chance to review them? It's.
Yeah, can we wait till next meeting?
Not a problem, sure. All right, we'll table um January third minutes to the next meeting. Um, anything else, mask implementation, how did, how did that go? That was a, you guys just met?
Right, do you want to do the update, Lori?
Sure.
I can't even remember, I'm thinking, I'm still on Bartlett.
So we had two community meetings. Uh, so the first one was held at the high school library and it was very, very well attended. So sixty-six people signed in. Um, but I know that there were some people who didn't sign in, so chances are we had somewhere between seventy and eighty people. So that was uh great. And to the point where we even ran out of dots, because we couldn't even fathom that we would get close to that amount of people. So uh, thanks to everybody who turned out and participated. Uh, so the following week, we had our business workshop that was a seven A M. meeting. Uh, the attendance was a lot smaller, uh, we probably had about twelve people attend the business meeting. But we got some really uh great feedback from business owners, uh, so uh, we're super excited. Right now, we are um working on the traffic counts during the traffic analysis at at the intersections. Um, that is, unfortunately, it delayed the projects by a couple of weeks, because there was a malfunction with the accounting equipment. So they ended up having to reinstall. Um, and that is also delaying the next community meeting, because we want to make sure that the consultants has the conversation with MASTOT to see if they would be open to some modifications to Route twenty. Uh, possible uh narrowing of the roadway, possible on-street parking. Um, so the committee decided at last week's meeting, uh, there, it was more important to get the design right than to worry about the initial deadline of uh completion of the project by the end of April.
Great. Um. That was a, I thought that was a really great meeting that, I thought, I feel like we've met since then, but the put that here where people participated at the high school, there was just a ton of people there, so nice to see. We haven't, I haven't seen, I don't think, and if anyone else has, jump in. But since the inception of master plan, when we had very first meeting to talk about it, I don't think we've had that much participation since. So that was good to see, people re-engaged with it.
Yeah, no, the great thing is people seem really excited and hopeful. Uh, so I was uh invigorated by the people who showed up and how positive they were.
Um, okay, we don't have any subcommittee updates?
Not for me.
Anything um coming up with the Z B A on twenty eighth?
So four fifty, uh fifty-five Whitney is actually going to the Z A first. So it turns out that there's a a split with the um jurisdiction. So they're coming to the planning board for site plan review and groundwater special permit. And they're going to the Z B A for a special permit for non-conforming use. Uh, expansion of a non-conforming use as well as a non-conforming structure. Um, so the the scope of the Z B A is more limited than the scope of the planning board. But I thought it might be helpful if if you folks could see the totality of the comments. So I was thinking about doing a joint letter. Um, so the first portion of the letter will address the Z B A comments. And then the second portion of the letter will address planning board uh jurisdictional comments. So that way, um, C B A can see that there's more being addressed by the planning board. And you folks can see uh what will hopefully be addressed by the Z B A. And do you think that that makes sense? Uh, is that the type of letter you'd like to see?
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a really good idea.
Okay, good. I don't want anybody to feel like something's falling through the cracks, so.
Yeah, that's great, I don't think we've ever had that before, so I think we usually have to watch the meeting to find out.
Right, that way both boards are informed.
Um, okay. Then I think, and if there's no other business for the, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
All right, good night.
Good night.